I'd like to call this meeting to order on February 4th, 2019 at 6:06 PM. First, we have a public budget hearing before our regular meeting, but I don't see any public here to participate in our public budget hearing. Do you have anything to say about that?
Nope.
Okay.
We can just do the budget presentation.
Later. Yep, okay. All right, well then we'll proceed with our regular meeting. Anyone in the audience like to be acknowledged and scheduled at this time? Seeing no one. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from January 7th? They came kind of late today, so if you hadn't had a chance to read them, we can...
The only correction was the name.
Yeah.
Oh, right, yes. Everybody's cool with it?
Yep.
Okay, so then we just need a...
Ethics disclosure.
Motion.
Yep.
Bob just moved them.
We have them posted.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, the regular session. So I need a second. Bob, you moved to...
Yeah.
You made a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from January 7th? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Warrants are circulating. Gordon, thank you again for taking the time to go visit Christine. Oh, it's a single signature.
We haven't had it since last time. We just leave it on there.
Okay.
If it does happen. So tonight I brought the warrants.
Perfect. Thank you. That's right, because we're meeting monthly now, it's just budget season.
He just likes to hear things.
Yeah, I just, you know, want to put you in spotlight. So, school committee correspondence and reports. I reached out to the Halifax Teachers Association president and asked them if they had any input on anything pertaining to the budget outside of contract that they would like to see in the classrooms or around the building. So they responded, and you have it in your little packet here. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look this over. So, we can talk about it now, we can talk about it later when we talk about the budget. I did speak with Kane and asked him to kind of take a look at this and give me an idea of what...I don't want to say what you feel is necessary, but you know, like prioritizing kind of things on this list and things like that. So I don't know if you guys want to take a minute to look it over. It's a pretty short document, and then we can talk about whatever. Our feelings on it, I guess.
I would recommend we talk about it during the budget discussion.
Okay. I kind of have that feeling also, because I mean, most of it pertains to the budget anyway, so...okay, is everybody all right with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Good, we'll do that then. I don't have any unfinished business. Anybody else? The only new business I have is I sent an email to Kane and Brian asking them to...as I'm sure most of you know, they do a citizen of the month, student of the month, citizen of the month in the school. And so I asked our principal and vice-principal to kind of provide me with a list of those students, so we can sort of recognize them outside of the building. And I thought it would be a good idea to write a little blurb in the local paper every month, giving a shout-out to those students. And I also thought that it would be nice to send them a letter on behalf of the school committee, congratulating them for their upstanding work in the building. And I want to make sure, I wanted to run that by you guys before I go and send a letter on behalf of the school committee. So as long as you guys are okay with that, and you give me the go-ahead, that's something I would like to start doing. Anybody have any feelings on that?
It's... That would be nice.
I don't know if I actually need a motion for that, I just need your support, basically.
How are you sending them acknowledging to teachers?
Well, I was gonna do a little blurb in the paper, and then I don't know if I could, like, I'm not sure what the process is exactly. I don't know if I would send a letter, like, pen the letter on behalf of the committee and give it to Kane, and have him send it to the families, because you know, he has obviously all of their information. Or if we just put it in the paper, or what? Go ahead.
I think in the paper, the community note, and a letter home with the child, we really appreciate for them to bring home to the parents, and say, not only did you get this, but the school committee recognized it as well the following month, so it's like a...
A follow-up to...
A follow-up to it, to, you know, to say it meant something to the school.
Okay. All right, awesome. So if everybody's on board with it, it's something I'd kind of like to start doing.
The only thing I think we'd want to make sure to do is to get parent permission to put in the paper.
Good point.
Just to be sure.
Okay.
Just to make sure there wasn't a misstep.
Two big size lists, too. We're looking at 28 classrooms, specialists, some specialist.
So it isn't just, it isn't just one, it isn't just one, it is per grade level, per specialist.
Per teacher.
So that's a lot of people.
So question on the, like, the social media policy or picture policy? Could we amend that policy to say that you authorized that to be printed in the paper as well? Like, if they sign off the release that they're okay with their child's photo being published, that they would sign off as well for the child's name to be printed in the paper?
The publishing would probably cover the paper, because it does list, and it's part of the handbook. When they sign off on the handbook is where we have it. So that would probably count, so we would just have to make sure, to be careful, that none of the students picked were on that list, because otherwise it would be onerous, probably, for you to contact all those people. And I'm sure you weren't necessarily looking for that. I mean, it's a wonderful idea. It's just the idea of reaching out to 30-some parents would probably...
Individually, every month, yeah.
Yeah.
On top of everything else.
Right. So maybe if there's, we do have that, so we just would need to make sure that they weren't on that list, that they weren't on the no photo list.
My list is wrong.
Right, right, that would be easy enough.
Okay.
Because if they weren't on that list, then just publish their names.
We should be covered. But we can still send them a letter home.
Right, right, yep.
Okay. Do you think that would be reasonable?
I mean, the other thing we could do is if the, if we just invited the paper in every month when you did it, as a recognition. If they had the ability to come in, I don't know if they would or not.
Is it always at the same time?
Paper, hi.
I know, it was always like the second Tuesday or something.
Yeah, we need to try and start the month, but try to rotate around.
Yeah.
Sometimes in the morning, it's scary.
Right.
It's scary.
Okay. Well, we can have a fluid conversation about it, as long as everybody's on board with it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think it's a nice idea. Right. I mean, I think sometimes the paper, right, and I think sometimes the paper even accepts photos. If we took one, if it's a reasonable photo, they might...
We do lots of photos during the ceremony, so we can share those photos out.
Right. Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody have any future agenda items? Bus. Adding the extra bus.
And discussion on, so, at the last meeting, we talked about that, and I will draw up the 10-signature petition article and present that separately from the book.
Okay.
So that the parents, if they want to come to town meeting and have a reason to be there, if they aren't tapping the current, like, the bus, what adding one more bus would do, maybe if we had some information on that for town meeting, what we would see for numbers of kids on the bus, and what the estimated route trip would be for, what would we get from that? Because, again, why we ended this line again, because the death, we didn't bring her home early today, so, that's really bad. There were at least six cars out on this side of the street, and there were four cars on the other side of the street, and we could just do something to alleviate the number of kids being picked up. I'm sure, you know, it changes, but I think, given the community opportunity to vote on that outside of the budget, because we don't feel like we could include it in the budget as our budget is, but given the community the ability to direct, we would add one more bus to spend the money directly.
So you would have a wa, and I, just because I don't know the process, you would have a warrant article that can be voted on separate to...
Separate to the school budget.
To just fund that bus itself from the town.
And then one other idea that I had, that I didn't have a chance to talk to you about, was could that bus be used as a late bus afterwards for Halifax students?
From the elementary?
I don't, I don't know if it could or not. I would have to ask David. We're actually have a meeting with them later this week.
A late bus at the elementary level?
No, 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 it could, well, maybe that, but maybe a late bus for the high school.
We have late buses.
For just Halifax students. I mean, if we have to pay the $60,000 for the...
You're just trying to get the most for your money.
Yes.
Okay.
So is there something else that we could do with that bus?
I don't know the answer to that. The late bus is a separate cost. I mean, and there is a Halifax late bus, but it's an additional cost for late buses, it's not part of the bus contract.
It's in the contract, it's aside from the...
I just didn't know if the elementary school has to spend the money for the bus.
Right, sure.
Spend the money for the bus, and it's only going to be used for the elementary...
Right. What else could we do with it?
What else could we do with that bus?
Right.
And we do have after-school programs, four days a week. I don't know.
Did you bring a warrant after with that?
I don't know. I'm just saying, like, if we're spending money...
Sure.
Could we have some ideas on what we could do with that, with that bus?
Well, I'm sure the townspeople appreciate it if you're asking for more money, if we can at least maximize what you're getting.
We can add that to our agenda.
Yeah, we could ask, bus company might listen, just because they work many different towns, and they've seen some of these solutions, yeah.
It was just...
No, it's a good idea. We'll chat, we'll be meeting with them, I think, Thursday, sometime this week.
Okay, so if they have an answer to what the bus would look like if we added another one, this one, actually, one of the parents in the gym just mentioned that to me as I was walking up here.
Okay. Mentioned what to you?
The length of the bus rides.
Is an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I said, all right, we'll move to the meeting, I will...
No, that's a great idea, thank you, Gordon.
Okay. Okay, reports of standing committees. So, last month, we gave everybody policy, and there was a little bit of feedback, we've had a discussion with Joy, and it's been resolved, so there aren't any amendments to the policies as of right now. So if that's the case, we need a motion to waive the actual reading and accept the second reading of the policies, and we need the Stooges routine from Allison.
I'll second the motion. All right. So, I'm making a motion to...
To waive the actual reading.
Waive the actual reading and...
Accept as a second reading.
Accept as a second reading.
Perfect.
Policies AC, ACAB, ADF, EFD, GBA, GBEBD, GCF, IJND, ILD, JV, JFABE, JFABF, JICH, and JFF.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Negotiations have not met. PAC?
Uh, we may have Thursday.
Okay.
We need to...
I am playing phone tag with Dick Steele for Youth and Rec, so I don't have an update at this time. Okay. PTO?
PTO met, I think the state's wrong, it says November 14th, definitely wasn't then. And I brought the idea of the Raptor visitor ID system to them, and they were receptive to the idea, but wanted some more information on it, namely, how, kind of how the whole process would work, and when would it be implemented?
Okay.
So the initial feedback was, well, I remember, there was some event going on that, that happened to happen that day, I don't remember what it was, but they use the all-purpose room. So I said, well, with every event now, should we anticipate a 25-minute line, because everybody has to stand in line for a badge to turn around and walk 40 feet into the all-purpose room, which I get, and the whole field day topic got brought up. So, I know that Steve had, which is, they're all valid points.
Absolutely.
So Steve Pello had mentioned that it had been implemented in other schools.
Yep.
So I was planning on reaching out to them and seeing what their feedback in terms of how has it been implemented, and how does the procedure work. And, I mean, I've never been to the other elementary schools, so I don't know if it's, if they have similar outdoor activities, field day type things, I assume they would.
Yes.
So, they were receptive to the idea, but had more questions than I had answers for.
Okay.
So I'm gonna do a little bit more homework on my end.
Sure.
They have some movie nights coming up on February 1st, oh, no, past, The Incredibles they just had, Booster-Thon Fun Round, they're doing it this year also, that's on March 15th, Book Fair, March 18 to '22. They have some other fun, exciting stuff that's to be determined in terms of dates. They voted on some allocations, and their next meeting is February 27th at 6:30.
Okay. I can answer a few questions if you'd like for the Raptor.
Okay.
That'd be helpful?
That would absolutely be helpful.
Okay. So Kingston Elementary and Kingston Intermediate are the two elementary schools that have Raptor.
Okay.
Dennett does not have it yet. So it runs about 2,200, off the top of my head.
Yeah.
I think that's a figure.
Yeah, we got all the cost side of it down, so it was...
So what we tend to do is, when it's an outdoor activity, it is not really controllable in terms of scanning, like, we can't get everybody to line up, because they have to come in through the building. Halifax is not set up where it is as easy or as convenient, because if they're going into the all-purpose room, to your point, they go up and then backwards, so it's a little bit of a different setup. Eventually, whether or not, if Halifax ever made some changes in terms of security...
In terms of the entryway lobby or something like that.
Exactly. You know, it, the location of the check-in is not as safe as we would prefer. You know, you'd like to have a double-door entrance, where you lock, you know, you buzz them into one way, there's a vestibule, and then they scan the thing, and then you buzz them into the second set of doors. That's the best, and that's what most new schools have. I don't know how easy a retrofit would be on something like that in Halifax at this point in time, with all the money that's spent on the windows, doors, roofs, fire suppression, I don't think it's happening, certainly in my lifetime in the district, but, you know, at some point, that would be valid. When there's a large event, it sort of depends a little bit on the layout of it, like the school book fair, which is a, you know, pretty parent-popular event. Generally, people kind of meander in, so that one works okay. When you have, like, American Education Week, and you may have, like, a massive number of people, sometimes you're not scanning everybody in. The community is reasonably small, so it isn't as much of an issue as in some bigger communities, but it does, it can back up a bit.
Okay.
But like, at the high school, where it probably gets the most use, it's sort of seamless at this point.
Okay.
They just come into the kiosk and they run through. I mean, you've probably been in there.
Which, that reminded me of another question I had, was, is there any, is there, is there an impact we're not considering in terms of the extra work now that's going to be expected of the front office staff with their daily duties, and all of a sudden now they have to drop what they're doing to scan an ID?
It adds, it definitely adds. Personally, I think safety and security is something important to add, so I mean, you know, and all of us have things added on our jobs. It, I don't think it's that time-consuming, when it's really a problem is when you have the big events, but they're signing in, I believe, or should be, before they go to an event anyway. So, you know, parents are sort of used to coming in and signing where they're going. So, it, the difference is, is they're running a license through, but it's, it's pretty, it's pretty like, you know, I don't know, what was it, less than a minute, right?
It was very quick.
It, I mean, it's, it's pretty quick, you know, it's pretty impressive, so...
I was with Alex, we did, we had, we had this, and I think they're asking the optionality of the actual program.
Mm-hmm.
And I think he told, it scans...
Driver's license.
Sex offenders in the area, and then we really could answer what else.
Yeah.
Would you, eventually, if the technology was better, do you, Corey's event system, eventually, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Yeah, I mean, that, I think the one thing we were pretty sure of is that we're not trying to, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but we're not presenting this as a replacement for Corey's.
Oh, gosh, no.
Yeah.
No, Corey's, Corey's are a whole different ballgame, and that would be inappropriate for your secretary to do that.
Right, and Brian did a good job explaining that.
Right, I mean, that would, that would not be...
So they kind of had a conversation, oh, they're only divorce, sex offenders, I guess.
Right. Or if there's some, you know, outstanding issue.
Yeah, I mean, it said you can input lists with malicious persons or something like that.
Right, if you have parents, some divorces.
But you have to have that input previously.
Yes, yep, yep. Again, it is not the be-all, end-all. It is an additional option for safety and security. What we're trying to do is present all the information, and Bob probably actually has more background than most of us on it, but, you know, as I said, it's, it's something that we have at the high school, at the KES and KIS, it was paid for, but actually, all three of those buildings were paid for by PTO. The middle school is in the process, we'll, we'll be implementing it and getting that funded at the middle school.
Okay.
And Dennett is, you know, the other building, and again, Dennett is so small, you literally almost know everybody that walks in, so, you know, it's very tiny.
Great, thank you.
So the PTO's paying for it at the middle school as well?
At the middle school, it, I don't know that it's gotten to the point of going there, we're actually looking at trying to make a cut-through, you know where that wall is? You know when you walk in, how they have the double doors?
Mm-hmm.
And if you look on your right, that is literally on the other side of where the secretary is.
Yeah.
So right now, we're trying to figure out if we could actually cut through that wall to set it up.
Yeah.
So, we have, we're sort of like, have so many things moving simultaneously, there are about 17 more of me, I'd be fine. But that's, that's, that's sort of where we're at with the middle school, but the middle school, it will be, I'm not sure where Jim is on getting that implemented.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Do you have a question?
Is it possible to bring up with the PTO a bottle refill station?
Sure.
And see if they would work.
Yeah.
Unification committee in town?
So, we were gonna talk about...
We have it in the budget, don't we?
Walk-through.
We, we actually have it in the budget.
Okay.
Pin that until the budget discussion.
Yeah, no, that was, I think when you were doing your lights, we said the walk-through we had, we're gonna bring it up during the building budget discussion.
Bob?
It looks like the glass on the front doors is standard double-dame glass. I thought we requested a channel glass.
Well, it's tempered.
What I need is glass you can't throw a brick through.
Okay. So I guess you need it.
I'm sure it was on the building door specification.
Yeah.
Is there a check-in with the...
No, I'm just saying that, no, to Bob's, to Bob's point, if the architect in the job specs said that these doors shall have X, Y, Z, you can't throw a brick through a glass, then that's what should be there. But if at some point in time, the architect didn't put that into the specifications, then...
They might have been in the door set.
Oh, jeez.
Which, which set?
When is the next building committee?
Charlie had indicated that he was thinking of having one next week, maybe the 13th, does that sound familiar, Kane?
I thought it was after the vacation.
Oh, I thought it was before.
I feel like...
But it wasn't a definite, it wasn't definite. I mean, he had reached out and said that he wasn't, he wasn't interested in having a meeting, just to have a meeting, but he had indicated...
Because the fire suppression bins are supposed to be open on the eighth. They're supposed to open the bins at the eighth.
Wood, it's wood.
I don't want to have a meeting just to have a meeting, but I would like to have one possibly the afternoon of Wednesday, February 13th, to go over everything before the school vacation week.
Okay.
So, but it wasn't definite, and he just wrote out, would that be possible? Can't believe I actually remembered the date and everything.
I know.
Pretty impressive.
I'm just writing this down, Bob, so I can ask about the specs of the doors, when we have that meeting.
It's still to be online. It's just to be on the town, I'm saying.
Okay. Is that it for PTO?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
No, you're good, I'm just, just trying to keep the ball moving here.
Yeah.
Capital budget, no, no, admin review?
There is no meeting. I'm in the process of putting together evidence for my goals, and those will be going out, and then, that's due by the end of February, and then, if you could fill out the evaluations and have them in, I think it's due maybe second week of March, something along those lines. But it's in process, but there has not been a meeting.
Union 31, we meet soon, yeah.
Valentine's Day, sorry, 5:30. And that's to vote the shared cost budget.
Yep. Yep, yep. Okay. Mr. Bowdre, you and Brian have the floor.
The moment is up. This is 610.
My God, it's fast.
That was off, sorry.
I've got to be mentioned practically, The Way, I think we did, I would have called it earlier, Melissa Farrell, and she writes a lot of the grants here in the building, so she was part of this one here, where she's working with John Troy and Jackie Keel. They went to some professional development, during the core grade specialists, what they would do was work with the kits that you can see up on top of the bookcases over there, in those plastic boxes, it's kind of like a STEM project, STEM units that they work on, the kids really enjoyed it. I think this first year was done, but there was some very good feedback that Sturges and staff, and they will just hopefully continue to work with that, and, you know, expand as we will. Another grant from Melissa Farrell, the Early Grade Literacy Grant, that we're just getting going right now, is Melissa Farrell and the coaching consultant that we have is Melissa Rice, who works with us, and also in Kingston...
Kingston.
Not Dennett, no.
Not Dennett, too small.
With us in Kingston. So we have teachers in grades K through 3 that are part of the grant, that open themselves up to some coaching and consulting, and talking about student talk in the classroom is a real focus for the goal, and they work on not only their own classrooms, but then they expand, but they're on, through the grade level and throughout the building. So Brian and I are kind of part of that process, and Brian, we're going to a couple of the regional workshops, conferences that they have, they're monthly, and Melissa Farrell and teachers go to, Brian, to some of those, so it's a pretty good message, and we're in the beginning phases of it, but we are, anything like we had, the writing consultant that came in last year, it was a great success, so we're hoping to see the same with this one here. Having a coach in the building to work with our primary grades is fantastic. Our end-cast calendar is up, it's approved. Understand my numbers, I was trying to simplify it there. The ELA starts on April 23rd, that is after vacation, and it goes until May 2nd, and that's the order of grades that that goes in, so fifth grade goes first, and sixth, and fourth, and third, two days of testing for every, every grade level. And then, science is in the middle, which is a change from this year, from years prior, we've always done science at the end, for fifth grade, we tried switching, switching it up this year, and put science in there, and then math is May 8th to May 22nd, that's our window there, and that time, we're starting sixth grade, and fourth, third, and then fifth, because fifth grade gets three tests. And that time, we're starting sixth grade, and the fourth, third, and then fifth, because fifth grade gets three tests. And that is posted in a group PPS.
Where do the students take the test?
In classrooms. Or separate settings. On the top, or both?
Yeah, but not for science. Is science paper still, or is it, it's all online this year?
This year, it's.
Science. Oh, not science yet, but math and ELA. Am I confusing myself?
I'm just, I think, I think you're confusing yourself. I thought science was online this year. I think it's online this year.
Because didn't we have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. It's time.
It is. It just makes it so much easier.
Yeah.
The office. We have to call ourselves.
Yeah.
But it is pretty easy. We just take the crumbles and we make sure the technical part, make sure everything is set on crumbles. So students are used to using the testing on the crumbles, so. The E O report. All of that tech marketing is done, we're reading that. And that's posted on the site, we did Facebook. So, go to our vacations. And Boosterthon, I mean, I don't know if we chatted about this last time, but Boosterthon is set from March sixth to the fifteenth. We're tweaking right now the proposal that came to us. So last year, we actually did a fun one. And this year, we're trying to see if we would try something different, play some new ideas with Boosterthon. And it was kind of like a dance fitnessathon that they would like to pilot, try it out with us. It's so wonderful. Just everyone wants to see Brian on a dance, I guess.
I'd pay money to see that.
So, right now, we met, PTO was part of the meeting with Brian and I, and Boosterthon. There wasn't a decision made at the table, but it's on the table, and we're talking about the logistics of it. It's kind of like the, what's the video game?
Dance Revolution?
Just dance. It's kind of like that setup. Instead of running for a minute, you can see dance for a minute. And they kind of set it up that way. And figure out on the big screen, and tucked up pretty good games. We're not sure, there wasn't a firm yes when the PTO was there.
Have you run this by the kids yet?
Well, we did not.
Leave out, leave out the word fitness.
Yeah.
I think that was kind of, they wanted to balance it between dance and fitness, maybe. Or maybe it could be a hybrid with a run or walk around, so they were willing to work with us because they haven't done it.
Cause you gotta think, like, some kids are probably too shy to, like, dance.
We have split PTO members who said, my, my child would be anxious, because they wouldn't want to dance. And other parents say, I don't want to be alone, so.
Yeah. Oh, I think definitely they'd be fun.
Maybe they love to walk, dance, or whatever, I don't want to be anxious.
Maybe they'd run the end dance.
Well, we had, we had some that didn't want to run last year.
Yeah.
So, we were like, okay, walk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You'll always get that.
And then option, yeah. And it'll still be driving the school daily.
Same way, same setup. The only other option that was on the table was how they were getting the daily lessons out, because they kind of talked about some character and aspects of the program. So, we had it done last year where it was just done during lunchtime in the cafeteria. So they had the whole group together and seemed to work pretty well for us, but it was almost leaving the teachers out of the discussion of character. So they were a little bit out of touch with that. So we talked about maybe a possibility of a Boosterthon going for their own, in a smaller skit, that just personalizing it, taking each and every as opposed to having almost a hundred students with food in front of them. And you only had twenty minutes or so. So they did offer that as a possibility to go. And there wasn't a firm decision on that as well.
It's coming quick, though.
I have a Boosterthon question. You might be planning on touching on it. What playground one?
Oh, I think it's Fiesta Town.
Fiesta Town? Oh, we're gonna have a sad household.
I have a split, one of each.
Yeah.
All right, we're meeting.
Is it a recess?
Yeah, recess.
Recession.
Yeah, I have a Fiesta Town.
Add a two-in-one split.
We're meeting, we're gonna go to a.
I didn't even care. The kid didn't even talk about it. All he cares about is playing soccer or what else to play.
How many options did you give?
Four.
Four, right? And so they let the kids decide what playground design throughout the year.
Yeah.
There was nothing else to say.
Kid doesn't tell me anything, he's such a boy.
So what I think we need to do when we zero down on the actual playground look like is soccer was really nice to show us.
Yeah, give you a rendering of it, yeah. Awesome.
Yeah, that'd be great, I'd love to see it, yeah.
It's neat.
Yeah. It's like three D or whatever-ish.
And you can put some trees in there, very nice.
You're like, we're getting trees?
Yeah, but we need to come out Thursday, so we'll let you know. Again, it's logistics we haven't really kind of nailed down exactly how it all works, because he's saying that he can do this in two days. The hops playground. Two days.
Years and years and years built up to two days.
So that's why I was blown away. I mean, what day? I don't know, I mean, with us, we've been talking about the town, seeing how, you know, we can help us out with the same level of current structure. So hopefully, he can help us nail down some tickets.
So hops is like, ready, right? Like, it's ready to go?
It's spring.
Awesome.
We're on the committees, that's what I heard.
I think it's, they've already picked the weekend, right?
Yeah.
The weekend's set.
They've asked people to come and help and tear out whatever is there.
Awesome.
More time than making. Worked hard on that.
Yeah. Cool.
And February, that's just, budget, how do we want to?
We can group it all together.
Yeah, we'll do that all together.
And it's just, it's just a few dates there. PTO.
Can you go to?
Wednesday the thirteenth.
Can you unite? Don't go alternating with somebody, I always get confused.
No, I usually, depending on my work schedule, I can't necessarily do the day ones. So it's every other month is a day night, day night.
Right.
There.
I had a PTO six thirty, but they have.
You?
This says, February twenty-seventh. Let me look at the website, because I'm just going off the agenda. But she, when we were done, she goes, oh, I put the wrong date on, but I thought she was talking about the top. Maybe she was talking about both dates.
The day we had in the office was the thirteenth.
All right, let me.
It was nighttime.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to their website right now.
But I thought there was a scheduled conflict.
It's definitely an evening one, I know that for a fact.
And I know that there's some type of conflict coming up because it was a Friday morning one, and we're testing on that day. So I don't know if that was.
I think that's.
April eight somewhere.
Yeah, because it would have been February night, March day, April, I don't know.
May tonight.
We have winter vacation coming up, the eighteenth. And on Monday, twenty-fifth, as a teacher, it's our special school for students. We will hopefully do maybe a high school, and we'll be back, students are back on the twenty-sixth.
And I grew up at the high school, is doing that again, where they are offering to watch the kids.
Yes.
We could have looked for, yeah, I must have got an email that, because we did it in the past, so I don't know if that's why I got the email. So I don't know what group it is, is it?
Julia.
I'm sorry, what?
The group that is offering to watch the kids.
Oh, yes, the high school.
Preschool program?
No.
Student council?
That's it. I was coming up with student advisory, that wasn't it at all. Yeah, student council, Tony Pina. So the flyer, I believe, went out already? Yeah, so they're, they watch them during the day. Yeah, the kids have a great time. It's amazing how many of them there are.
Kids' Day two thousand nineteen.
That's the one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the PTO calendar does say the thirteenth, Kane, you're right.
And Kids' Day, that is case of six, fifteen dollars per child on ninety-one. All for reserve spa.
Yeah, we did it in the past, it's great.
Cool. Thank you. Ms. Healy?
In your package, tonight, once again, we have a lovely financial chat. There really hasn't been much that's happened since last month. The couple of the highlights are homeless transportation account, the deficit's increased there. It's increased about a thousand dollars. It is what it is. That's through December. The only other areas is special education, transportation, that deficit has grown since you saw it last month. But the deficit you see in the financial has been reduced since the printing of this, so it'll end up being fifteen thousand dollars less. And we expect the local tuition funds in the category to take care of that. Throughout the financial, there are a couple of isolated deficits that will be absorbed in the categories. And then, just a reminder, the other district vocational still has a surplus of thirty-one thousand. That's it, unless there are any questions.
You're playing. Shortest window ever.
Do you have a projected total on deficit versus over?
A prediction of our balance to the end of the year?
Yes, that's. I was looking for, I'm glad you understand my broken English.
We are not quite there yet to put a number out there, but we're constantly looking at, we know what our payroll's gonna be. We know what our transportation contract's gonna be. So we're always looking at those items. And there were communication with the schools to make sure that to complete the projects they will complete, that made the purchases they want to complete. So we're not ready to say that we're gonna have a. What we do know is that our regular day budget, there's a deficit in contract services, special education, which falls under the regular day budget. So we have to be mindful of that as we're getting close to the end of the year.
Okay.
So we try to keep in mind how all those pieces will impact one another.
Cause I was just thinking if we had to make changes to the upcoming budget, if there were items that, if, if we had money left over and made a deal with the selectmen and finance committee, that is some of the money that we have available to spend on, let's say textbooks.
Exactly.
And talk to them and say, well, we can spend that money now and not use that as one-time source for the upcoming budget. Cause normally, the money gets turned back over at the end of the year.
Exactly, goes into free cash.
Goes all into free cash. So, if there was a way to come to an agreement and say, you know, if the textbooks cost eighty thousand dollars and we had forty thousand dollars or five thousand dollars, we would have ever the numbers to put it towards that.
Good idea, right.
It's a great idea. And again, the only thing that is definitive unless someone moves in is vocational's thirty-one thousand. So that's, that's pretty definite at this point in time.
And there'll also be a surplus in special education tuition. Those we know, because we have concrete numbers of the students that we currently have, so unless somebody loses it, unless, that's what we know as of right now. Some of the other accounts, if a decision like that was made, we could work with that decision.
Right.
We may change the options.
Just looking at the numbers that we received from chapter seventy funding from Silver Lake Side. And knowing that the town of Kingston is looking for a three percent assessment increase. I think that the school committee might be able to make an agreement with the selectmen and finance committee of our upcoming budget year.
Okay.
And work with everyone to try to maneuver spending so that it fits within. The typical agreement has been, anything that's left is turned back over.
Exactly.
But if there's a way to adjust between two budget cycles, it might give us more flexibility to maneuver, to get what we need to get. We've been pushing off the textbooks for at least three years, at least. And lining up with the other schools is important as well.
Exactly.
I definitely recognize that reservation.
Okay. I think that's creative, that's great.
I mean, otherwise, you're just shifting the shell around.
Yeah.
It is, but if it gives us more ability to accomplish the goals that the committee has set and works with the selectmen and finance committees to get those things done.
Right.
Then I think they'll be more willing to work with us as of just, the typical arrangement has been, everything gets turned back. And we're not asking for money out of free cash for those items.
Right.
So, I mean, we could put in a warrant article for the textbooks for free cash, but that's not how we've done things. So if we work with them, we'll be able to.
Is there something you have in mind? Is textbooks, you're thinking of?
I'm just thinking if the number, so, cause I'm looking at the total as a whole of what the finance committee's gonna be looking at. I estimated two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the assessment for Halifax. It's just a rough assessment, given the numbers that we had. And we were looking at three hundred plus here.
Overall increase is two thirty-six.
Two thirty-six. So. So we're looking at spending close to six hundred. Well, I was including in this.
You're including what?
I was thinking about school bus when I was.
Oh, okay, sure.
I was thinking that with both schools, we're gonna be close to five hundred fifty to six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I don't know the Silver Lake numbers off the top of my head.
Yeah. Just, just estimate from what I know from the past. Prop two and a half is only four hundred thousand for the town Halifax. So, we're gonna have to look at, we know that, at least with the textbooks, that's a one-time cost that we're talking about.
Right.
And are there other one-time costs in the budget that we'd be able to shift around? Which is with the whole thing that I was looking at, because.
This is not kind of the conversation we started out where we had about the technology line with the, trying to get the switches done.
Outside.
Outside.
Right, it's a warrant article.
So, just looking at all those items, I think it, it would work well for the town if everyone's looking at the budget cycle, not just as a one-year item, but a multiple-year item, because we know there's items on this side of the street, there's items on that side of the street that need to get done on time. If everyone's looking at this together, I think we have much more.
Harmonious discussion.
Yeah, yeah, be more on those lines of trying to get what everyone's trying to get accomplished within the budget years.
Yeah.
So we can dive into our budget discussion in a few minutes.
Just hit there totally.
Thank you, Christine. Ms. Peroud, before we get lost in budget land?
Yep. So the state's anticipating a large number of educator licensure renewals this June. And so in anticipation, we have hosted a licensure requirements presentation in January for all of our educators. And in my report I listed for you, in case you had an interest, the breakdown of the required one hundred and fifty professional development points, or PDPs as we refer to them, what's required in order to renew licensure. And then tomorrow, we will be hosting a Title IX training for our school leaders with Attorney Du Feray. As part of the educational stability review, we are looking at possibly updating our homeless foster care and military-involved student policies based upon a report from the Department of Education. There were certain features in the MASC policy that did not meet the state's requirements. And so we're, we're working on adjusting and coming up with a plan in terms of trying to meet those, those recommendations. And then, the professional development committee has coordinated and approved the plan for the February fifth, twenty-fifth Professional Development Day. And I have included in your packets a sample agenda of the day. In addition, the wellness committee has included a number of wellness offerings and opportunities for staff on that same day. So I also included a list for you to take a look at the wide variety of offerings that we'll be able to provide for our staff on the Professional Development Day. So the day is structured so that the morning session is a common presentation, that breakout sessions will be held by grade level or department. And then, we have a little break for wellness opportunities for staff, lunch. And then, in the afternoon, teachers will work on incorporating self-awareness and self-management strategies into an existing lesson plan. So that's our plan for today, for the day. So that's our plan for today, for the day. In addition, the PD Council, several PD Council members attended a measuring, assessing and measuring social emotional skills. Basically, the team wanted to take a look at potential strategies to determine the impact of our social emotional efforts and ways in which a classroom teacher, or a school, or even a district could begin to look at and monitor the effectiveness of the strategies that they were employing. And then finally, today, we had our onsite visit for the Tiered Focus Monitoring Review, which years ago, we referred to as Coordinated Program Review. And within forty-five days, a report will be sent to the superintendent of schools with their report and potentially any findings. And they'll have an opportunity to respond and then potentially work out any solutions for any issues that may arise. But based upon today's discussion, we felt very good about where we are so far in the process, both civil rights and special education. Any questions about anything? Yes.
School committee members attend this?
Absolutely, absolutely. We would love to talk about our successes and things that we've tried that have worked. The main thing, when we first started employing this, is we started with staff. And we were really fortunate to have so many staff members who were willing to lead sessions. And then some staff members would be sad because they would be leading a session so they couldn't attend a session. So the trick is kind of making sure that it rotate and that we... We also had a number of people reach out to community options for us. And they were more than willing to come in and share their expertise for free, which is also wonderful. And certainly, it fits with our wellness goals. But it's also a nice opportunity for our staff in keeping with our social emotional goals and making sure that our staff has their... Is working on their own care, self-care. So, and there's a little bit of everything there, from OSHA standards to yoga, to therapy dogs, to drums.
I saw that. Let some aggression out?
Yeah, oh, they're awesome.
Arts, all sorts of fun opportunities. We're excited about the variety.
It matters to the community as a whole, you know?
Yes.
Sort of blending everybody.
Yep, it's great.
Yes.
Will it be a handoff of de-stress at your desk program?
We can ask. Yes, it sounds like some really good stuff. And unfortunately, we can't go to all of them. So we have sign-ups and then we just hope to be able to continue to change and grow and to try to meet the needs of our staff.
Is the staff from all four schools?
Yes. Yep.
What is this thing called?
I'll tell you.
Oh, okay, that's...
I will let you know. And we also included in your packet the MCAS schedule, which is also posted to school websites. But it's also in your packet as well, so we're trying to put it everywhere, as Kane has already pointed out.
Great. Anybody have any questions before we move on? Besides, can school committee members attend? Okay.
Excellent.
It's black one.
Thank you. So I wanted to begin to talk about the FY20 budget. And if you notice in your packet, you have a new graph. And that's to be added into your budget folder that I gave you last month. And generally, we have the graphs on the left side. I don't know if you remember, but I mentioned that we didn't have the school attending children report for private schools. So I couldn't give you this information when I gave you the packet. So this tells you the number of students K through six and then seven through twelve who are attending private and parochial schools. So if you notice on the elementary level, back in two thousand and thirteen, there were ten Halifax students who attended private or parochial schools. And that is down to three now. And then on the secondary level, it has gone from twenty-six to four. So there has been a pretty substantial decrease. Most of the students in our system were attending Sacred Heart. And what is basically happening is families are... The cost of a private education is impacting some families' choices. I guess that's probably the best way of saying that. So I know that some of the private schools have struggled with that. Also, remember that parents can, if they chose, other than a public school setting, they can go to a charter school for free. So if, for whatever reason, they choose not to go to the community school, oftentimes they'll go to a charter school where there is no cost involved. So it's just some additional information. It's most dramatic, as you can see, on the secondary level, in terms of the decreasing enrollment, which is to our benefit. Again, unfortunately, we also are having that almost a parallel increase at the charter schools. So...
Which does cost the district and the school system here money out of Chapter Seventy at a different rate than what we can actually spend here personally?
Right, right. So it's, you know, it is a very difficult situation. As I said, I live on the Cape and I know that, I mean, we are in many ways fortunate. On the Cape, Sturgis is really having a massive impact on many Cape schools. So, you know, Rising Tide is a smaller charter school, not quite as established. So, or with quite the reputation among Sturgis schools.
I was going to say Sturgis.
One of the number ones in the school, in the state, so...
I think it's even recognized nationwide.
Yes, yeah, and they have the IB program and, you know, it's really quite impressive, so... But this is just some additional information for your benefit. And again, I'm pleased that, you know, again, basically, we're having less students leaving to go into the private and parochial schools. So I'll continue to gather any data I can, just for your information in regards to budget information. Summer noticed, and I apologize, I hadn't caught it. We have made a decision to move the public budget hearing into February, as opposed to March, which was on your timeline. The reason we did that was we had one year where we had a snowstorm in March. And public budget hearings have to have an ad taken out in the paper. They have to be publicized. And when we had the snowstorm, it really caused a bit of a problem because budgets have to be voted in March. And you have to have a budget hearing before you vote the budget. So that's why we moved it into February. And I didn't catch that when I put together the timeline, so, just so you know, that was my error on that. On the budget, I have received no information from the town in terms of a number. Traditionally, what has happened and works, I believe, for the school committee and certainly for us as administrators, is when the town gives us a number that we can work towards. It is very difficult. You have line item autonomy, as you all know. So if we have a number, then we can agree on what that number is and figure out the way to get to that number. And that would be something that, you know, I would meet with my friends Kane and Brian and Christine and Joe and I and Marie and Melissa and Steve. And we would go through the budget and then we could come forward with some recommendations for you. That has been a procedure that's worked reasonably well. But without any number, I honestly don't know what to work towards or with. So I don't know if any of you have any more information, but that's sort of where we're at at this point in time.
No, I just attended that one finance committee meeting and we had a preliminary discussion. They had just started to look at the town's budgets. They didn't give me any number. They basically said, you know, we've asked every department for a level service budget, which we, for the most part, have provided them, you know, because the bus is not included and so forth.
Yep, no, this is a level service budget.
So, and they, it was like a very, very preliminary discussion. So I have not heard back from them. They told me they'd let me know when we can come in. Anybody on this committee is welcome to go to that meeting. I'll certainly, as soon as... Why am I drawing a blank on her name? Melinda, I wanted to call her Michelle. As soon as Melinda reaches out to me and lets me know when they're going to go through our budget to invite you guys to the meeting so we can all attend and post it accordingly if we all want to be there. But other than that, I don't have a number from them either. So, I mean, it's really up to us to kind of comb through here. We also haven't had our shared cost budget meeting. So that number may or may not change in this budget. So we are not prepared to, by any means, vote on anything in this budget. But we can certainly comb through it, or however you guys want to handle it is fine. I mean, we've had it for at least a month. So I'm sure if anybody has any questions, we can start talking about it, or however you want to handle it.
Well, I have a couple of updates, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, that'd be great.
So one thing that has come out that will help everybody, it's not part of the Halifax budget, but it's part of the Silver Lake budget, but it impacts all Halifax town employees, is all the towns put in five percent for insurance. And what they've come back with is they're recommending one-point-five percent. So that's a huge savings. So that will help the town of Halifax. It's, again, you don't have insurance as part of your budget, but Silver Lake, I'm my own city, so we have insurance in there. So we're going to put in a two percent increase for insurance. You know, we have to plow for snow. I mean, we're like a city, Silver Lake is. But for Halifax, it will be helpful for the town's budget, is that decrease in insurance. I don't know what Charlie is putting in, but they had recommended the one-point-five.
I know Halifax originally had five percent.
Right.
And so I thought that was a positive sign. And then I got the notification last week. It hasn't been voted on yet, but that's what's being recommended, is one and a half.
That is awesome. Because we've been working previously, you know, eight to fifteen, something like that.
Right, so this is a huge help. So we're really pleased about that. I did just want to remind you that we put circuit breaker in at sixty percent. So that is an area that if we needed to, we could increase that amount. Last year, I believe what we put in was sixty-five percent. And off the top of my head, was it thirty-two, thirty-four?
Each five percent is thirty-five thousand eight hundred.
That was pretty good.
We were at sixty percent right now.
Right, we're at sixty percent. So if, that would be one way we could make a savings with a reasonably safe number, is going to sixty-five percent. And the shared cost when this budget was built was not updated to the number. We have not voted it to Summer's point. But if the union votes the shared cost budget, it would cost nine thousand...
An increase of nine thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
So that would be the number that we, at this point, are looking at bringing forward for shared cost. So if you look, there's zero percent increases on all of the first page for shared cost. Well, we originally put in Halifax, because you're first. We did not have an opportunity... You went to summary page.
Am I on the wrong, do I have the wrong budget? I have two budgets in there.
Oh, okay, you wanted the summary one, is the one that's easiest. And you'll notice that the whole first pages are zeros.
The function page or the...?
It's the one that says the summary.
Yeah.
Yep, and if you look at all the first, see, are there all zeros for increases?
Why can't you...
Yeah, but the summary, it's not all zeros.
Well, the summary, the summary's by function codes, so superintendent's office is second and...
Right, but the shared cost, two and three, is carried through to this, isn't it?
So the report already left us the details, so you'll see all the accounts that make up each one of those.
Right, so, but my point is these zeros in a single line are broken out to the zeros here.
Correct.
Yes, yep.
And then it's also the special education area, the same thing happens.
So if we were, if Halifax, if the shared cost is voted on the fourteenth, it would increase this budget by the nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-three-ish. Nine-nine-three-nine, whatever number she just said. Did you say nine-nine?
Nine thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Sorry, nine thousand three hundred and thirty-nine. Again, we have not, we could increase circuit breaker to sixty-five percent. You know, obviously, if the committee said to us, you, you know, look to find what, I don't know, twenty thousand dollars decrease or whatever number you picked, you know, we can come back and bring that forward. At this point, I don't know if the committee is interested in, or feels the need to schedule another budget meeting, or if you believe in March, when we meet again, we'll be able to come to a number. I just haven't received anything from the town, so I honestly don't know what we're working with. I don't know if we're close. I think Gordon's got a creative idea in terms of some of our money. Within the regular day budget, you have the line item autonomy. So if the committee said, you know, if there's twenty thousand left in FY nineteen budget, you know, you'd like us to use that towards textbooks, you know, to lower that textbook cost, you would have the right to do that. That's certainly within your purview and rights as a school committee member. The thirty-one thousand under vocational would require a vote at the town meeting to move it. Because it would be moved, yes, as a special, because that would actually be moving money. But your regular day budget is yours to spend. So, you know, depending on how the committee wanted to handle it. Certainly, the town appreciates communication, but, you know, you do have the right to make some of those recommendations and moves.
Without having Silver Lake's number, the town pretty much can't do much for finance until they have at least that number so they can respond back and add everything up. That one was going to be over two-hundred thousand, from my estimate, so...
The minimum, the net minimum contribution was increased by a hundred and...
I want to say it was like ninety thousand. Halifax's net minimum contribution, Silver Lake was increased without regard to the budget whatsoever.
Luntons went up pretty big, too.
Yeah, it was like a hundred and ten. Kingston was even worse.
Eight dollars, yeah.
Right, so the state decides how much a town's ability to pay is. And so the state decided all three towns have an ability to pay more than they had previously. I guess that's the most simplistic way of saying it. So without doing anything, without any changes, if we didn't increase our budget, Halifax had an increase of about ninety thousand without doing anything at Silver Lake. So when you have that, we can't control that. Like, I can't control what the state says. So without any impact on our budget, you know, they already are having to spend more money. So it makes it difficult to balance a budget from our end, because I can't control that. I see smoke coming out of your ears.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
I can tell.
There's a total net minimum spent. And the school can spend above that, which the schools have been.
Right.
So that money shifts how much money goes to percentage wise. Roughly, Halifax is thirty-three percent.
Right, exactly.
Right.
So when you shift those net minimums...
But I mean, that's...
Kingston's at fifty-six, Halifax is at thirty-three, and Luntons at twelve. But when you shift, yeah, for the amount of money above the net minimum spent. So when you shift, the state shifts the net minimum, it changes the whole relationship of how much money is required to spend by the towns.
Yeah, so when you say required, so it doesn't necessarily... Why do you say required to spend by the towns? So they're saying in order to have a, like, viable public education offering, I guess viable's not the right word, but whatever, you need to spend X amount of dollars.
Yes.
So does that mean that they give less aid on the state side? Or they give the same amount of aid, but they're saying your foundation needs to be...
I can't wait to hear you explain this, go for it.
So, on the state aid side of things...
This is why it's so nice to have a finance committee member on board, by the way.
So the net minimum increase was twenty thousand dollars per student. So when you look at Silver Lake, right, twenty dollars per student, doesn't it even...
Not twenty thousand, yeah.
Twenty dollars per student. And we have two thousand students total, so they, that's their rough math, right? So when you look at Silver Lake's budget, you just go right to the cherry sheet and you can see the numbers. And it says that Silver Lake will be getting a net decrease of state aid by sixty thousand dollars.
Because we can afford to pick up that slack.
Well, no, that's not net minimum.
We're having a lovely time, this is fun.
So that's not the net minimum spent. That is the amount of money that Chapter Seventy will give to the school system, right? So this, here's the total sum of money and this chargeback. So by the way, we're going to charge you for this, we're going to charge you for this. So you're going to receive sixty thousand dollars less this upcoming year than you received last year. So then, your net minimum spend calculation comes through, oh, wait, but now you're required to spend more money. So not only is the state taping away sixty thousand dollars, they're telling you, you have to spend more money to the tune of close to five-hundred thousand dollars this year. So that changes the calculation at Silver Lake, right? When you look at the elementary school, they actually gave the elementary school a rather large increase of state aid.
Okay.
For this current year and last current year, which we didn't really take into the calculations when I was on that South East Street. We didn't, it didn't really come through. So over the last two years, the state aid is going to, going to be up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the elementary school.
Okay.
So that's why I was saying, we really need to talk about budgets as a whole and over time and what it means.
I was just going to add a little piece to the puzzle is that we're doing all this based on the governance and budget in January. What happens in July may not relate to what we had to make our assumptions on. So that's the tricky... So, that's, that's the tricky piece.
So there was one year where Clinton and Kingston's numbers were very far apart than what we estimated, to the tune of $100,000. And so we had, we vote, you know, in March, the budget comes through, as Christine said, and it can be completely different.
Right.
So then you have to run the calculation of, okay, well, this is what our estimated numbers were, here's our assessment, and then you have to look at what actually came through. So we, we had an increase of, not vocational, transportation, regional transportation, was increased from the state over what we had estimated. So, when you go back and redo all the tables in the spreadsheet, you have to change what you estimated to the actual number that you received. And it messes up the spreadsheet really badly, do that.
Totally, yes.
So, when we look at the numbers as a total, my estimate is 270 for Silver Lake, just based on what we had in the spreadsheet. You have the number here, we know that they asked us to leave $300,000 on the table to try to pay for the projects that are coming forth. We know that there's only been one contractor that's come through and looked at this. We don't know if they've given a bid, we just know that one contractor came through.
For a fire?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, chances are, the amount of money that was estimated for that project is going to be not enough. So, knowing all those parts of the calculation, I think it would be best not to vote on the budget.
Oh, we're not, definitely not voting on the budget.
Until Silver Lake at least has an estimated assessment number for the towns to work with, to come back and say, oh, this is what we're looking at as a total. My guess is that if the elementary school budget, Silver Lake come through, the town's only going to have about $50,000 to $60,000 to spend total, if they want.
On every other department, yeah.
Yeah, if they want to keep within the number that they recommended at that budget meeting. So my guess is they're going to be asking us to make cuts in the budget.
Right, so that was part of the conversation when I was across the street, is because the school budget eats up so much of the town budget between Silver Lake and our building here, it leaves, like Gordon was saying, such a small little bit for every other department in town. So, because we have such a large budget, I just think it's, and I reminded them that we're very cognizant of that on, on this committee, and, you know, we're not just frivolously spending money, you know, and, so, anyway.
Can I just ask, so when the towns receive extra money for the elementary, where is that money, if it's not taken into effect? I mean, if the town's receiving an extra 150?
So it goes into the total. So when the, the finance committee does its budget, it takes the, it's a completely separate spreadsheet that we look at for state aid, and that just gets, the total gets put in to the top. So it, it's revenue coming in, it's state aid, it's property taxes, personal taxes, water revenue, recycling revenue.
So does it go in the big state aid bucket?
So what happens is, you can't control?
Well, I'm just trying to think, if we have, if additional revenue is coming into the town of Halifax, doesn't that mean they therefore have more money than to spend? Or am I not thinking through the way you're using it on finance?
So, there is more money to spend, but is that money being allocated the way that the state?
That's my question, yes.
So that's, that's something that?
They're going to call and say, oh, here's extra.
Yeah.
Well, we never, never really had that discussion, because that was the first year that that happened. We didn't really think, that, that number on the governor's budget, we didn't think was real when it came through.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, I just, I just was curious, when you were saying that, I was kind of like, hmm, interesting.
And when does it increase the revenues the year it actually comes in?
It does.
So it's for FY19, so the town will have additional funds for Chapter 70 versus what they budgeted?
Yes. So that, so that number gets turned into free cash afterwards. But if you, there is no way to say that if it's $2 million for Chapter 70, that these particular $2 million out of the budget are spent on the elementary school. It's just, here's $2 million, here's all the revenue, and this is how everything's proportioned out. There is no control to say, oh, you got $75,000 more in Chapter 70.
Right.
We need to spend that $75,000 more.
No, no, I understand that, I guess I was just thinking, you've, you've talked about the amount of money available. Seems like there may be more money available if the town received additional revenue. I guess that was?
Well, it would be, so, right now, Prop 2 and 1/2 is about $400,000 for the town. So, if the finance committee is just looking at the $400,000 and not believing that the Chapter 70 increase of $70,000 is actually true, then that's something that we need to talk to them about. But if they're including that $70,000 increase?
In the $400,000?
And, well, no, we'll be on top of that.
Yeah.
Then, they need to realize that that money is supposed to be going towards the education. So if there's an increase of $70,000 for Chapter 70, then us saying, we want 2.5% plus that 70, to go towards is not unrealistic expectation. Because there is a net minimum for the elementary school, too. And I'm not sure what the numbers are proportionate, where we are on that, assuming that we're above that. But, I just think when you look at all those numbers, everybody here needs to understand how Chapter 70 works, how the town formulates a budget, and what items should be talked about. Because certainly, items that have been pushed off the list, it's, it's almost like we need not just a capital plan, but a list of items that have been brought up year after year, just like we do on the other side, where people have come before the finance committee and said, we really need this in this department. We've pushed this off for six or seven years, like the highway department. The number of pieces of equipment that were never replaced, or what they're looking for for labor in a number of streets, so that there's a running list there, but we're not doing the same thing on the school side.
Okay.
So, just?
I think we probably have a general idea of those things, though. Like, every year, the first thing that we scratch is the classroom furniture.
Yep.
It's like, well, that can wait, well, that can wait.
Yeah, put a poster.
Oh, yeah, in the poster machine.
We're going to write it back down. But, but there, so when the town mark gets published, right, this should be, one of the things that I thought on the finance committee that we never actually printed, was a list of items that didn't make the capital plan. Like, their, the capital plan's huge, it's out there for five years. Everyone in the town just looks at it, like, they're recommending this, 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 and this. Isn't there anything that you're not recommending, and not knowing that this huge list of items that?
Got pushed.
So I think that that would make sense for the school committee to do, and say, here's the items that we wanted.
That we're not getting, because?
That we're not getting because we took those off to meet the, the town's financial restraint. So that everyone in town knows, here's the list, here's our needs that we didn't get this year. Here's some wants, and here's some things that we'd like to have, that we're working with the PTO to say, we understand that the town can't afford to supply everything, but here's the things that we think are upcoming, that the town needs to be aware of. Would be like putting the bus, the actual bus on the town mark last year, saying, we know that's, we know that's an issue.
In the, in the section of, we're not getting it this year, but it's come, yeah.
So that everyone's aware that the things that are being requested, the things that are in the budget, have already been pared down. And that's, that information is not being shared across with anyone unless you're watching the meeting, so you come to the meeting to say, you know, the teachers would like, you know, we talked about the list that the teachers talked about, these are the things that they think will help education. Well, they didn't make the budget because we can't afford them, but you should be aware that these are the things that the teachers want, the administration wants, the school community thinks we should have, but we just can't afford them.
Just to play devil's advocate, what are you hoping to get out of that?
Just leave a running list of things that you think should be in the budget, but they're not. So when we talk about them the next year, those items are at least brought up again.
How many of those items do you think are part of the capital plan? I guess I, I just, I'm missing, I understand what you're saying, I just, I don't, so?
So when we publish the budget that goes into the warrant, it's just the top summary. We don't publish the things that we, we didn't fund. We don't have a list of, here's the things that were removed that we need.
Yeah.
So, like, the top five things that aren't in the budget that the school can really use. So everyone's aware of the fact that these things aren't in the budget, but we think that they should be. So when you start off the conversation, because you're seeing a lot of turnover in the town.
I, I guess I, my, which I appreciate, so, are you only going to include things that get cut? Like, when we did our walkthrough, there was a lot of things that I've never heard brought up in budget discussions, and it, I don't want to speak for anybody, but it's kind of like, well, yeah, I'm perfect, I mean, how many times do we say in a perfect world?
Right.
So are you going to present a budget that's three times this and say, but we pared it back to this, because we didn't?
No, 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 I'm not saying present a budget, I'm saying, here's a list of the top 10 things that really should be addressed within the next few years.
But isn't that the capital plan?
It can be, but the capital plan tends to be items that are 10,000 or more, and some of these items aren't necessarily 10,000. And some of them could be personnel, you know, which you would never put on a capital plan. So, you know, a basic building item would be a capital plan. You know, maybe shades for, I don't know, the, what is it, the, what is that side, east? You know, the large gym windows, you know, when, when we put the thing in.
Or the acoustics in that room, as we talked about.
Forever, and anytime you go to a town meeting, you can't hear, I mean, it's awful. So, you know, those kinds of things could be 5 to 10,000, but they might not be. The voting booths, you know, that should have been something that the town picked up, but Matt Durkey luckily wrote a grant, I mean, used our Maya grant, but it meant we couldn't use a grant for something else that we would normally have gotten, but that was something that really mattered to him, because he spent an inordinate amount of time putting them together.
Which, then you justify it on the state labor costs.
Well, insanity.
Really, it's, it's not so much a capital list, it's an operating budget list of things that are not in the budget, that the school committee, the administration, the teachers feel should be, but we can't afford it. So that, at least, because the only thing that the average taxpayer gets right now is they open the warrant, they see the budget summary. All I'm saying, let's add another page to the summary, with all these things that everyone's talking about. So that everyone's aware, because there's major turnover at the finance committee. There's going to be turnover here, there's going to be turnover all over.
Tots.
So, if we lose the institutional knowledge, at least we have it written down someplace that other people can pick up and say, oh, they noted that this was an issue.
And I think it could, you know, I'm not sure it necessarily warrant going to town meeting, maybe it would, but I think certainly as an internal document for school committee and administrators, I think it's probably a really good idea. You know, I think if you bring it to town meeting, they might think you're asking for more.
That's?
You know, and I think that's the point you're trying to get at.
Yeah, I mean, I always try to keep public perception into it, because at the end of the day, it's, you know, we have 610 students, out of the town, 7,800. So, I just don't want to, I mean, we've already got a lot of money voted for the building, so I just, optically, you're going to present a piece of paper that says, yeah, we wanted new flooring, we wanted this, we wanted that, we wanted new acoustics, and we wanted new floor.
But, but?
We all want.
But I think if you had the list of, at least with the floors, I mean, we didn't even talk about the floors as part of being an issue when we talked about the building, that wasn't, I mean, I don't remember the administration bringing that up as an issue.
There was, there was prioritization where, I remember being on that side of it, where I at least remember Bob making a statement at one point, because the committee was asked to come forth of some sort of, I don't remember if it was prioritized, but Bob, I remember specifically saying, I'd rather my daughter had to hold an umbrella and have a security system to get a roof right now. Or granddaughter, excuse me, sorry. So I, that was part of it at some point.
But was that presented to everybody? I mean, the attendance at, at meetings is nil.
Well, it's also the same at town meeting.
Yeah.
Right, but the fact that the tiles on the floor from the kindergarten wing, right, there's a huge rug over there, because they're breaking. Why, why didn't we say, well, if we're going to do, if we're going to do the roof, we're going to do the windows, we're going to do the doors, wouldn't it have made sense to replace all the tiles down that line? So at least that there's an institutional knowledge of those items being issued. I mean, and having, and requiring a walkthrough at least once.
I, which I, I'm all on board for the walkthrough, I thought that was very informative and official. I just, where do you draw the line?
I, I would think, I would think that the school committee would come up with a list of items to present to the town, to say, these items are important to the school, they're just not in the budget right now.
Bob?
Might be a good idea to have that document at town meeting, to be used anywhere in the climate of the voters.
As a handout, what do you mean?
No, if they, uh?
Pushing back on the budget.
Somebody who's, and say, well, this is what we can't afford, and we rarely know that. Would they accuse us of being big spenders, for example? Or they sometimes do.
And I think also, it would be beneficial for the finance committee to just have a heads up, by the way, down the road, we know we're going to need new floors in classroom A, B, C, and D, so expect our maintenance budget to increase, whatever, I guess they don't need to know what line it's in, but at least they have a heads up of, you know, we might not be able to meet the target because of X, Y, and Z.
And a replacement schedule of textbooks.
Yeah.
Because I know, sitting on that side, that the textbook discussion has been pushed off for a number of years.
And that's, that's sort of what the, that Allison is looking at. And what we've done is, you know, we did the audit of all the different textbooks we have, and, you know, we did the science textbook, and now we're doing the math, and next up will be, you know, social studies, they've just changed the curriculum, so, you know, that will be forthcoming, and then by then, we'll be due for reading again. I mean, that's the unfortunate part, is it sort of just keeps, it keeps going, so. But that is the document that she's looking at, and that's why I added that for both elementaries and secondaries, so you have a sense of where we're at with it.
So we have different pieces that we need to come through. We have the budget as a whole that we need to come through, we have the building walkthrough that needs to be discussed, and we have the HTA budget recommendations that need to be discussed. Does anybody have any suggestion or opinion on which order we should do these things?
Do you need a motion to open the public hearing?
We, we already did, at the beginning.
I would recommend that while there's some teachers in here that we talked about?
Yeah, I'm with you on that one.
And I just want to add, so on the capital improvement, then, we got the table. We, our walkthrough kind of covered all these things as well, so that kind of kind of?
Okay.
When we get to that part.
Okay.
These are all things that we talked about, where that came to us.
Are you ladies aware of this letter that we received from the HTA? Would you like to see it for a moment, so we can talk about it? Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, I reached out to the HTA and asked them if they had any input on our budget, you know, kind of things that they seem to believe that they would like to see as teachers in the building. So we can take them one at a time, so the first one is the classroom size. So obviously, we know that grades one and two, there's a bubble there where the classroom size is a little bit bigger. I think we, I'm assuming are all on the same page as the committee, that right now adding another teacher is not reasonable, or making another classroom for those grade levels is not reasonable. And with a bubble like that, that would mean that the teacher would have to float, and it's my opinion that that's not really something that our budget can handle right now. How do you guys feel about that? Am I speaking out of turn, or?
I agree.
Okay, can I get like a something here? Okay. The second point that they brought up was extra paraprofessionals or aides to cover recess duty and lunch duty. This has been a conversation that's been kind of ongoing for the last few years. Kane had a little bit of feedback on that, some other towns do it. My initial, we're, go ahead.
I mean, it's, it's tough, I mean, it's only, the teachers have one morning in it to be for a week, that I remember, schedule, but I mean, it's, they've been asking for years for, for that component. It does freak teachers out, but? During the week, I mean, it's hard to find people that work 10 to 1. I mean, there's pros and cons to both sides. I did come for the district, but they did have paras, recess aides in cafeteria. It's, again, some pros to it and some cons to it.
I think, well, after speaking to you, like, my, my initial response is like, was a little bit like, really? But then, after talking to, then you had mentioned that in some towns, the, the bus driver will come and use that as like a break in their day. Or, you know, stay-at-home moms that need a few hours to get out of the house and do their thing. I think that if we look into it a little bit deeper, we can find out what kind of cost implication that will have on our budget. Right now, we don't have those numbers, but I, I think it's something that we can certainly have a revolving conversation about. I mean, you as a teacher can probably sympathize with that request.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. We guys work a little bit differently the way that our, so I don't have to do the duty, but but I know that the specialist teachers do. And we have to do something else in a little bit back, but, so it's fair, but, but yeah, I mean, I'm sure a lot of it, they have to do that.
The only other thing I was going to say about that is the piece of that, that we also need to have a conversation around, not only budget-wise, is as it pertains to a contract. So we have to be very careful not to sort of bleed those lines, because once it's in the contract, we are mandated, we're bound to pay it. And so I think, you know, that's part of the conversation moving forward also. Is that what you were going to?
I was going to mention that, the other thing I was going to mention is, you know, there are some schools that have that, but they don't have the number of aides that Halifax has. Halifax has 13 classroom aides, so that you have a lot of aides in Halifax. So the aides are, are, I believe, rotated through. And then a teacher, one teacher has aide duty a week, I believe is the correct schedule. So, you know, the schools that have the three-hour aides don't have the number of aides Halifax has. So you're using the aides differently. They, they have a part-time aide, but they don't have, you know, for, for the number of classrooms, the number of aides that Halifax has. And, you know, again, I think it's just, it is, it is a very difficult position to fill. I can, you know, it is not easy to find someone who is interested in being paid to, to have the middle of their day sort of taken up that way. You know, there are people who've done it, but, you know, their preference is always to go for full-time. Halifax has all full-time aides. So that's, the, the situation is different, and that the schools that have the part-time, three-hours aides, the teachers are still on duty. It's not that the teacher has no duty, so they're still overlapping with the aides, so.
Okay.
Just, just a little, at least in our districts, just so you know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, something I frankly don't know a ton about, but I certainly am, I'm open to the conversation.
Oh, absolutely, always open.
And I think we probably need to dig a little further and figure out what exactly that's going to mean for both the schedule for the teacher and, you know, the, the building and, and all of that. So as of right now, I don't see that being something that we can implement for the FY '20 budget. But again, it could be something that could potentially go on the list that we can think about moving forward, because it has been brought up several times.
Yep, and it comes up every year.
Three, can you speak to point three about the building-based math coach specialist, just to talk about like what positions we have supporting literacy and things like that, but not necessarily for math?
So in the building here, we have two literacy specialists that have been on board for hours since I've been here. And we also have.
Technically called remedial reading teachers.
So, you know, we refer to them as reading teachers. Melissa, reading and learning, they cover a little bit. We also have four Title I teachers, two of them are kind of tagged for literacy and two for math. And for math, we actually do not have any specialist or coach or anything like that, I think, here. Prior to my time, John Troy, who was our tech teacher, came on board as a math tutor.
We ran the computer lab as sort of a math computer lab, was initially, I think it's sort of evolved as technology has evolved. But that, that was initially how he came on, was as a math technology teacher.
So we kind of, we've thrown that around since we do have two reading teachers here in the building. With the way math has changed over the last few years. Kind of a root of it too.
So he's not a math specialist anymore?
He, he incorporates math in the computer classroom, but it is not a math remedial math. Yeah, and exactly, and it's not a remedial math program like remedial.
Conscious shift? Or is that just some of it over the years has kind of petered out? I just, when, when things like this get brought up.
Right.
I hate, I, I don't like, hate's a strong word, I don't like creating positions. Especially when you can say, well, it used to be like this, and this person used to do it, well, then why, why did that change? I just don't like the precedent of setting a new position.
Sure, no, 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 I get, and so this, this would be a completely different position. When John Troy was hired, a lot of his job was around Study Island.
And when was this?
During my time, I've been here 13 years, so somewhere between, you're what, seven years?
This is my eighth.
His eighth year, okay, so somewhere between eight and 13 years. He was hired, and when he was initially hired, one of the main goals he had was Study Island, and it was when MCAS, that was the program that was used. You probably had it a million years ago back in Whitman, but it's, it was the program that was used in almost every school district as support for MCAS. And his focus was, it was done on the computer, and the kids would go in and they would play these math games, and, and it was to support MCAS scores. Study Island sort of fell off the radar, sort of wasn't the flavor of the month anymore, probably the easiest way of saying it. And he continued to evolve in his skill set and in his technology background and being able to offer additional options. At the time, there was no technology teacher in Halifax, so Tech, Halifax was the only building that did not have a technology teacher. So as it sort of evolved, he does still, I believe, math games and math computer-based things, but it is not his main focus, so.
Tech standards.
Tech standards.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
So it wasn't ever like a remedial math position, again, just to be clear, but he had had a math overlap with the, with the lab that sort of evolved over time.
So if we have students now that are struggling in math.
There's Title I, there's the two part-time Title I, because you have four part-time Title I teachers, and then there's the classroom teacher. So there is not any remedial math. None of our elementaries have a remedial math teacher, just so you know. Let me clarify that. In Dennett, they used to have Title I, they lost Title I for a period of time when they went too low. The town of Dennett decided they wanted to continue to have a math person, so they have a math tutor, Point Nine. Not part of the teacher's contract, it's called a math tutor. Neither Kingston's have a math remedial math person. They've asked for it every year since I can remember. It's never gone through.
Can you just clarify? The four part-time Title I teachers, there's two lit and two math.
Exactly.
And on top of that, there are two.
Remedial reading.
Okay.
Yep. So math is, there aren't some of the supports for math, I think is really what the teachers are getting at, and and again, this is something that none of us would necessarily disagree with. It's just, again, it's a question of money and priorities.
And I think when you look at our reading specialists these days, Kane and I have asked for years, because we're clearly trying to get them to analyze that really effectively, I believe, they are doing a really good job in literacy and reading, taking our benchmarking and analyzing. And say, one area that we probably could improve on is that, analyzing that data, analyzing our assessments. And trying, we're trying to leave that with Melissa Farrell, who's in here.
But she's got so much.
We said, get that data, analyze it, get into your engine, make it set up. Our students, we have reading specialists that are all in the presence, because we thoroughly analyze that. We depend on our reading specialists to do that. So if we have a math specialist, it would be analyzing all of our star testing, analyzing our tests, findings that were for a week long. And it would probably be that aspect of looking at assessments, grade level assessments like that. Not just helping students, it would actually analyze what's going on. So, does that kind of answer?
Yep.
Some of our reading specialists. So, if your kids are doing a job too, there's Melissa Farrell, reading teachers in this title.
Yeah.
If there's weakness there, it's math. Kane and I kind of overseeing it, listen, pop some once a week, but there's not that one person there. And math is just as important, most of them are just 20 persons. To have two reading specialists is great. Would say, we're, we're doing reading, we probably need to strengthen our math.
Would it be realistic? Again, I don't know the answer to this because I'm not in the building, to share this position? Like, if it was possible to share this position with Dennett or one of the, or Kingston? Is that realistic? Like, or would it just be too much in different places for one person to juggle that?
I think, you know, what you would have to do is you'd have to schedule it so they'd be in buildings for particular days. But I think it certainly could be doable. You know, you could hire someone who could be a tutor. Like I said, the one, the person in Dennett is not part of the teacher's contract. She is a tutor, a Point Nine tutor. She's not technically within the teacher's contract. If you go within the teacher's contract, it could be a little bit more confusing because each contract pays differently. And has different salaries and has different rights. So it gets a little complex, but I'm used to headaches, so I mean, it's not, it's not soundable.
But even hiring like a math teacher, tutor, as opposed to like a coach or whatever it's called, is an option?
If, there's money. I mean, you know, as I said, Kingston has, yeah, Kingston, Kingston has wanted someone for quite a period of time. You know, it, it is possible to have somebody within a shared cost budget. Melissa is paid through the shared cost budget, Melissa Farrell. Every, every town chips in for her salary. You know, we, we have positions that that is the funding source, you know, Christine, Jill, and I are paid through the shared cost budget, so you certainly could share that way. Again, it would be sort of outside of the teacher's contract because there isn't any easy way of doing that.
Do our teachers have any input on this discussion? I'd love to hear it, if you do.
I wouldn't bear to speak to that.
You don't have.
I do, I do a role, I would. I, I, I don't know, I think number one is very important, too, but I don't know, it's just knocked out. Math specialists, I think is important. I see kindergarten. If you tell where the white kids are going on, are we going to struggle on math? Well, they don't have, they don't have the number sense. So it would be nice to have a math specialist to help and figure out if we can do that, because those kids are struggling. Okay, even with the dimensions that we put in these class of teachers, you know, the same ones are struggling on first, the same things are struggling on second, you know. So, yeah, math specialists to the board. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I guess I just was wondering if, yeah, basically some feedback on.
I'm a resident, I, I thought the meeting started at seven, because the website's kind of set up, so that's why.
It is on the website, it's seven? Shouldn't be. Which website?
Halifax.
Really?
I confirmed the time today. Oh, you know what? I've ran into this issue before, different on mobile sites versus the town site, because there's one site out there that I'm not even on the committee.
Should be, correct. Thank you for bringing that up. I had no idea. We switched our meeting times to six months ago, so that's not good.
Anyway, so with, with the math specialists, I'm sure we have a, probably some way out with math. My old district, that's what we did, and we're up. And I know some, a lot of districts are going with math too.
I don't know, as a resident, I just, I want to hear everything that you can really share, or answer the question.
No, I mean, whatever input or feedback or questions you have, feel free, but.
I guess I just wondered why there wasn't more discussion about number one. You know, that sounds sounds pretty large of a class size, but it sounds like that was not really discussed in college.
We can talk about it.
Maybe if that was the number one concern.
I'm, I'm not sure that these are.
I didn't get the impression that he put them in order. I could definitely email him back and ask him, because I was wondering the same thing myself, if this was like a prioritized list. Like I said, just looking at it from like a budget standpoint, strictly a budget standpoint, it seemed unreasonable for us to build a classroom and fund a teacher for it. I mean, I could be speaking out of line, but that was just my opinion of number one. I mean, like we talk about in a perfect world, obviously, we'd love to have our classroom max be 20 students. But does anybody else want to speak to that, or the building principal want to speak to that?
Seems like a lot of questions.
It's, the, the class sizes are very reasonable relative to what they have been in districts. It's 23 to 25 is a little bit higher. When they say the ideal benchmark of 20, that's not written anywhere, that's not like a recommendation. You know, that's, that's somewhere, I mean, something that I think was, is lovely, but you can't always make that. I mean, we've had districts where we've had to have class sizes of 28 to 30 for quite a few years in Kingston, until we were able to get them under control. In Halifax, again, you have a classroom, you have a special education teacher, you have aides, so it isn't that, it is just one adult in the room for the entire day with that numbers of students. You know, we have resources that are coming through, so, which obviously lowers your ratio within the students, so. The town has been very supportive of Halifax. We had a year, eh, quite a while ago, maybe a dozen years ago, where we had a large bubble, like more like 27-ish, Lisa, I think you were here, where we had a teacher that sort of followed the kids, which is sort of a nightmare, to be honest with you. To sort of spread it out and to lower the class sizes. It happens, you know, all.
Is that usually over 25?
Twenty, we try to keep them at 25, but it's not, you know, in Halifax, they've always had, they've been lucky. I don't, I don't know if lucky is the right word. The town has been very supportive of the elementary schools, so Halifax has been very fortunate in that I really can't think of times that they've gone over 25 in 13 years I've been here.
Our class size right now, kindergarten's at 21, grade one's at 23, grade two is our I-1, 25, grade three's at 20, grade four's at 21, grade five's at 21, and six is at 22.
So that 25 will kind of continue.
Right, it's, it's a bubble.
It's that's the.
Right, and, and it happens, but again, there isn't any easy solution to resolving it, so.
I mean, I don't, I just wonder if we, do we, do we have the, the capacity? Do we have the extra classroom? I mean, go ahead.
Just before you go down that road, also, when we talk about budgets, we, we were asked to provide a level service budget as well, so that needs to be part of the consideration, at least you're informed of. At the budget, with the selectmen and finance committee, they ask for a level service budget, so this request is, is over and above that. So I think the request should be made, which was my point earlier, that you get the request, whether or not the school committee feels that that request can fit into the budget and then go fight for that, I think is the, the next step.
And, and I think also the town, you know, we bought forward a level service budget, but I anticipate the town asking us to cut what's already here, let alone adding any additional positions. I will be very surprised if the town doesn't ask us to make some cuts on some level. So it's, it's difficult, but again, I think the town has been supportive of the schools in general in terms of class size.
I think it's a number to keep an eye on. It's large, but surrounding communities have.
Yep.
Do you think it's manageable, the way that, I mean?
It's a lot, I mean, but we've been running 18 to 21 students.
Exactly, been very lucky. Gets spoiled.
Sweet spot.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I remember when I was teaching, I had 27, 28.
Absolutely.
Without any support.
Yeah, and, and, and in here, you do have them.
Right, so I, it's not ideal, it's, it's definitely a larger number that we've been used to. But I think if we keep an eye on it, I think we definitely do have.
But I think if we keep an eye on it, I think we definitely do have to bring that conversation back up. What happens when you go to like twenty-five, twenty-eight classroom? What becomes of problems? Is it, is it individual attention, or is it discipline issue, or is it?
All of the above.
Particularly interventions, you need to do extra help in the classroom, which reminds of being a lot of students to be able to-
You don't get his hand over the shoulder as much as you'd like to.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, teachers nowadays are doing less and less whole group instruction, more individualized, small groups. Twenty-five first graders that you've got to get around to, it shoots a lot of pitch.
Yeah.
It, it's a lot. And I think you can check any kind of research that, in the primary grades, that those numbers should stay as low as possible, between eighteen and twenty-one.
We don't have twenty-six, twenty-seven in the class, and that's twelve and thirteen year olds in that whole class. I can't imagine if they were, I mean, this is like, I volunteered in her class, and I was overwhelmed by the eighteen or nineteen kids over there. I couldn't handle it, so.
And delivering a different class, I mean, that stays with them all the time.
Exactly. My students will sit and see and say, I don't know if you can say that.
It's, it's, every classroom's cut, I mean, figure it cut in half.
Go ahead.
So, if there was a request for another teacher, i- is there a way to, just, I'm not saying the one's there, because I don't think it is. I think we'll have to cut, but looking at, when you get over that number, is there a way to assign a, an aide? That's been trained, like, do we have any aides that we've trained to be like the math tutor, or like the math specialist that would go in and work with the classrooms with a larger number of students? That would take one of the groups? Like, I think if, if you had somebody that would teach this math lesson for that, you know, five to ten kids, while the classroom's teacher is giving construction to the other three groups, is there? Right now, it's more based upon the needs of the student, not the size of the group or the class. That's just the way it's taken over right now.
Okay.
Excuse me, so I, do you know off the top of your head how Halifax, how much is this class size compared to Denett?
Um, Denett is very small. There's all of, I think we just broke two hundred. We were at one ninety-nine, I think right now we're just over two hundred or two oh one. Denett is not comparable to anybody else in the district. It is a very small school. There's two teachers per grade level, K through six. So, and there's two hundred students, so it's very small class sizes.
I think Kingston is kind of on the up, we're sort of in the middle.
And Kingston is, is on the upper end, as I said, right now, Kingston, you know, they, they range from, I would say nineteen to twenty-five is probably the class size averages. So it's, it's, it's probably more comparable to Halifax. And again, Kingston, for several years, was, was running high, but the town, you know, worked at putting in some additional teachers to lower those class sizes, but Denett is not comparable anywhere.
Do they have sixteen at Denett?
They have some very small class sizes. You know, we have some grades that, that only have like twenty-one kids in it, in a grade, and there's two teachers. So there's some very small classes.
Princess is playing twenty-three in her first grade class over at KES.
Um, could well be, easily. Yep, as I said, I mean, Halifax's numbers are not different than Kingston, for sure. They are different than Denett, but everybody's different than Denett. It's very difficult when you have a very small school to have the same children together in the same classroom for seven years. It would be, um-
What's typical, you get, you ask your friends?
Painful. Pardon me?
What's typical, you get maybe half of your friends with all of you?
Um-
Yeah, yeah, we get four teachers that are a grade level, so.
Yeah, split out.
They shuffle them around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think it was any, yeah.
Yes, pick them out of a hat.
Right, yeah.
Um, so typically, it's, I mean, we try and get them each month a year, not write extra students, that's just a teacher. But they usually would go four different ways.
Yeah, right. So the, the next request is a new sped position, and I can't speak to that at all, so I'm gonna need some help in that.
Typically, no, I go for this one.
Go for it.
Typically, it's, um-
I'll jump in.
It's based upon the caseloads for the students. And I want to say ninety-five students are on IEPs in this building. So we have-
Six.
Special ed teachers. So if you can kind of do the math, we're like right there at the spot. Sped caseloads, probably look in between fifteen and twenty is pretty much kind of where your spot is, but, I don't think that, I mean, ours are right there. And that doesn't include, when we're talking special ed, we also have our speech and language fellow. So she has probably all of kindergarten. So she, it's, services the majority of the communication disorders, so a lot of times that's K and one. So those, yes, those students may be on IEPs, but they're not serviced necessarily by a special ed teacher, but by the speech and linguist.
The sped teacher's now assigned by grades?
Yes.
Yes, so-
So, so is it fair to assume then that your IEPs are even across the board?
Mm-mm.
So when you say you could have fifteen to twenty cases per teacher is ideal, but how do you, if you have ten in grade three and thirty in grade five, how do you?
It's not that different.
Usually, no, I think they're, they're pretty much kind of the same, by third, third, fourth grade, but they're pretty much set. So K one, two, it's, students are getting identified. More in those grades, you pull out a timer on third, you know, or kind of set, or, you know. Unless there's a move in or something like that. The numbers in four, five, six are pretty much stable at that, that way since they're great.
Okay. And do you want to speak to point five about additional Chromebooks and-
So actually Halifax is in great shape.
Yeah.
They really are. We've been very fortunate with the REAP grant, and one of the things we've been doing is purchasing Chromebooks. So grades three through six is pretty much one to one within the classroom, they're not taking them home. But we pretty much have a Chromebook for every student, grades three through six. Grade two, I believe there are two carts for four classrooms, I'm actually doing quite well tonight. Two carts for four classrooms. And then K and one are mostly the iPads versus Chromebooks, which is true across all of our districts. We have the REAP grant again, we will continue to support and replace this. You know, Chromebooks, hmm, four or four or five years is a reasonable life for them. So Steve, you know, continues to use the REAP grant to do some of those replacements or projectors that need to be done. You know, he, he does a very nice job of maintaining the building. So I don't believe that that would be something that would be as much of a priority, you know, as, as some of the other items on here. I think, you know, the HTA, I think, was very thoughtful in what they put forward, and, and I really appreciate Summer reaching out and them taking the time to put this in. Again, I think it's just a question of, you know, where the town is and what the priorities are. But I think it's always good to get input from all parties. So I think this was a, a great exercise, but-
And I did note when I was going through the budget at home, that in Steve Pellows' technology budget presentation, in there, he did note that he is expecting to use the REAP grant for Chromebooks and things like that. So hopefully that will-
Absolutely.
Take care of that.
Yep, he, he, you know, he does a very nice job of, of spending every money. He's a great little shopper. He really does a nice job, so.
Also, in the face of replacing some of the big Chromebooks, like you said. Because they've been around, I mean, three and five years. Lots of little fingers on them, so I'm just starting to see some of the wear and tear. So I think now we're in the place of-
Yep. And again, you know, to Halifax's credit, you know, um, not that many years ago, Halifax was way behind in technology. And, you know, since we've been able to get the REAP grant, we've really focused on it and really made good use of the funds. So it's really made a huge difference, because it, it was really behind some of the other districts early on.
Go ahead.
So, so right now, in, in your classroom, do you have Chromebooks for every student?
Yes, six grade, yes.
Do you see, just looking forward, the needs of the students to take those, help them to complete projects?
Uh, yeah, I was expecting, there's, I think, six that do not have computers at home. So, since I have eighty-nine, so denyable to complete work at home, and it's a project. You know, we should use Google, Classroom a lot, Google Docs, and all that, so.
So-
So there's a percentage. So they're gonna, is what they wind up doing is staying recess.
Okay.
Shouldn't do it, but it's all they're doing.
Is there a way for this, the units that could be saved and done, turned over, the replacement, that create a, you know, a, a group that would be able to go home?
The problem would be that they might not have internet. It's more complex than just having a computer.
Okay.
But it, it's a good idea. I mean, that's, you know, the library would be a resource, but Chromebooks are useless without the internet.
I guess that's something that we could look into, yeah.
The rates are just assigning Chromebook and yours from day one to the end. But it's about the capability of that Wi-Fi network. And then responsibility to-
Right, they're, they are young.
Good idea though.
I think probably as the technology of cellular progresses, it's-
The other thing, too, is that Comcast provides free internet service if you hit minimum annual. So I don't know if, if it's an issue there, it's something that we could work out. Have a night where information can be shared, or getting free internet for those families that can't meet that requirement. So they're not being left behind.
I also would be curious to know how many of those families don't have the internet because they don't want it.
Hmm, that's true, yeah.
Which I can certainly relate to.
I'm sorry?
I, I can certainly understand that in some situations.
There's a big movement towards, you gotta embrace technology, but at some point you gotta cut, cut the cord.
Yep.
It's just that-
No one's shooting down your idea, dude. Okay, so we've gone through that.
Yep.
Oh, can I just take that?
Absolutely, yep.
About the, um, the math coach or math tutor, whatever works best. Is that something we can put on, like a future way, maybe like a list he was talking about? Even for us not to present to the town, but for ourselves in talking about finding out how much that would cost? And if we, it would be something we could share with Kingston or Denett or whoever? There's like a way we can, or just keep that in mind or something?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's no reason why, like myself, I can't start this list that we can all contribute to. I guess I would have to talk about how to do it without any sort of violation of any open meeting law or things like that, it gets-
Well, I think, you know, as we're, as we're going forward with the budget, I'll try to take some notes and I'll try to start a list. And that we can, you know, I don't, I think to your point, I don't think it's gonna be for this year. But, you know, as, you know, right now, we're gonna be, you know, it's lovely to have some of these conversations, but the reality is, within the month, we have to have a voted budget.
Yep.
And it gets tight for time, so, but we can sort of keep reasonable notes, if we all keep some notes. And then after we get the budget voted, we'll have a little more time to sort of talk about some of the things that we wish we had been able to put on the budget.
I mean, to that point, maybe after we're done with budget season, at our like next school committee meeting, we can sort of have like a wrap-up and make a list during the meeting and say, this is, you know, that's a great idea.
Yep, yeah, I think something like that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And that would be another one of those things we just need a little bit more research on as well.
So that's the thing, so then, so then next year, when we're talking about this math coach, or we're talking about the aides at recess, it's not, well, we don't know how much it's gonna cost or whatever. Then we can say it'll be X amount of dollars and-
Maybe check in with Kingston, see if they would be interested in it.
They might not appreciate, thought of as a desk.
I mean, Denett kind of already has their own in- on us, or Kingston?
Yeah, Kingston, Kingston, right, could be a possibility, right. I mean, we share an ELL teacher, for instance. You know, we have one teacher who works with our students who's speaking English as a second language on the elementary level. And Halifax buys time, based on the number of students you have and what their needs are. So, I mean, it's not out of the realm of possibility to do it.
Say at the unit thirty-one double-
It'd be another way of having the conversation.
Be great to have this conversation after the budget season this year. To say, these are the items that Halifax has identified, and if there's anything that we can work together on for the following-
Because we did that for technology guy, didn't we, at one point?
We have a technology person that's in-
That we share.
That we share, yep. He's in Halifax one day, Denett one day, and Silver Lake three days.
Didn't that happen with the facilities?
Yep, facilities are shared, yep, yeah. And that's, it's a, it's a good use of our crazy system. It's the only, I don't want to say it's the only benefit, but it is a lovely benefit. I shouldn't say it's the only benefit.
Four meetings a month are, are really-
Maybe there, yeah.
Do you want to talk about the building walkthrough? Because you took some pretty diligent notes. So I wasn't unable to go to that, unfortunately. But I would like a little update on what you found, talked about, whatever.
So, sure, we had a, I don't know if you call it facilities, building walkthrough, kind of open discussion with Kane and Brian and Matt was there, and kind of went through what was Matt's, uh, I guess, what he identified as things that we should be identifying as, kind of what Gordon said earlier, things that should be addressed in the near future, or things that he's been knowingly putting up with, with, you know, knowing, like, for example, yes, as you walk around, some ceiling, ceiling tiles are stained. But he left them there, knowing that as part of the sprinkler system, they're all getting replaced anyway.
Exactly.
And he identified some areas that are varying degrees of needing attention, that I thought was, was pretty good. You know, he started in the kindergarten wing, looked at the flooring down there. He identified some areas that the tiles were peeling up, but they think that the new doors have stopped some of the infiltration of the rainwater, the moisture. So he's kind of, I don't say waiting, but want to make sure that's the case. He did say that the new doors and windows on the back kindergarten seem to have helped with the cold, you know, bitter cold we had. He said that in years past, that those areas probably would have frozen a lot sooner. He had, I think he said he had one area that was starting to freeze up, but they're able to identify it. One thing he did bring up, which I would be curious to talk about, again, probably a good thing after this budget season, is Kane identified where there was a plan, I don't know if it was a formal plan, but there was kind of a program in place where every summer you would grab a few unit ventilators, or six or eight of them, rehab them, re-insulate them, you know, go through them top to bottom. And then over the last couple of years, I think you said, or no, this past summer, I think was the first time that that got, got skipped over, just because of all the destruction that was going on in the building. So that's something Matt had identified, that moving forward, instead of having, you know, one massive or an ongoing massive investment in trying to keep these things alive, you have a planned upgrade and rehab program in place. So it's, you know, you take a lot of little bites at the apple instead of getting surprised. One, excuse me, one area that is, I think, going to become an issue sooner or later is the flooring in the actual kitchen.
Yep.
So, you know, he had mentioned that the, obviously, the Board of Health and Service gives inspections and hasn't been cited yet, but there are some areas in the kitchen itself where part of the corner, the edges of the sheets of flooring are starting to peel up. The physical floor in the, I don't remember if it's a refrigerator or a freezer.
Freezer.
The freezer.
Freezer, sorry.
Oh, regardless, it's going to get replaced. So I think kitchen flooring was, was one of the big items he was bringing to our attention. That needs to be addressed.
Right, and that was something we talked about even maybe having to do this year.
Yep.
I think I brought that up at some point of a meeting.
They're very happy with the flooring in the cafeteria.
It looks great, yeah.
The heating unit in the cafeteria is in tough shape. So Matt is working on getting some quotes for either repairs or replacement of that unit. Of course, I'm- some quotes for either repairs or a replacement of that unit. Um, of course, in a perfect world, you know, he's trying to look ahead and, you know, market the building as useful space, and he said, and he's right, I agree with him personally, that the cafeteria is a great spot that potentially someday could use air conditioning. It would be a great multi-use space in the summertime. From there, we, or we actually walked by one of the water fountains, where we pointed out that they're looking to try to add water bottle filling stations.
Yep.
So, kind of the days of stopping, bending over, grabbing a drink of water from the fountain is over, so now everybody brings their own water bottles to school. Um, we walked, or we didn't walk out back, but from the connector going to the gym, um, they were talking about trying to extend the railing that wrapped, that kinda comes up that back walkway there, um, that would help the teachers in the morning kinda keep some more order in terms of when their kids are trying to come into the building. And then, um, one thing that I had never personally thought of when we were looking out that connector, looking at the walkway, is that Matt pointed out that whenever it snows, he has to snowblow a path all the way around the building for emergency egress, which makes sense, but there is no path all the way around the building, so he's taking his snow, or not his, but he's taking the snow blowers out there and, you know, going through sheer pins and making, he's doing his best, but it's gonna make a mess no matter what you do when you try to put a snow blower over dirt and grass. Um, so he said, you know, for the longevity of his equipment and, you know, when it's, when it's been frozen, then all of a sudden it thaws out really quickly, you have, um, you know, kids who are either going out for recess or just natural traffic going in and out, is gonna add not only labor and time to what he's tasked with doing and keeping the classrooms and the hallways clean, um, but it's more wear and tear on the equipment.
Yep.
What was his fun fact? I told him I'd spit out his fun fact. A pound of sand costs a maintenance facility, oh, more than that. Yeah, but he has a fun fact about how much sand getting brought into a building will, you know, and it's, it's true, if you go into the kindergarten classrooms, one of his examples was if you peel up a corner of the carpet, you can actually see where the carpet was, cause the tiles get like sanded just from kids walking, it's pretty crazy.
Yep.
He pointed out some flooring in the, in the kindergarten wing that was patched once there was a center runner that was removed, um, which seems like it's doing okay, but eventually the, you know, the flooring's gonna need to be replaced. Gordon brought up the gym soundproofing earlier. Um, not only the soundproofing itself, but the dividing screen between the two, or, I don't know, front half, back half, um, it functions, but it's, it's pretty dirty, and, um, there's no way for Matt to clean the actual soundproofing.
Right.
So, if you, if you walk up to it, it's like this rigid, uh, I don't even know, it almost looks like a horsehair pattern, but you can't vacuum it, you can't. Yeah, you can't do anything, so if you walk in and look around, you know, all the return drills for the hearing handlers, they're pretty tough shape. One of the things that Matt brought up that I know Kane, we had, not we, but it had been brought up earlier, was trying to find a real screen or a permanent screen, projector screen or whatever, rear projection screen for the gym.
Got it.
Which Steve had said, or had opened words in Steve's mouth, due to the size and the way it's physically installed, it would have to be like a rear projection style. It wouldn't be, you know, similar to this rehab one hanging out facing back at it. Um, but I know, I, I mean, I've only been to one or two of the sixth grade graduations, and last year it was a, you know, trying to get the sound right and the volume and the video and.
Yeah, you'd hardly see it.
Yeah, everybody's doing their best, um, but that, that was one area he identified that, again, looking towards the usages of the, of the building and of the spaces, it would be beneficial to have. Um, if you look at, so the, around the perimeter of the gym, especially where the, the basketball floor meets the, um, stage, I think you call it, there's some old padding there, which is splitting and tearing at the seams, so there's, it'll be duct taped back together. Um, the lights in the gym, it looks, they seem to be high pressure sodium, they're the same ones, like you turn them on in half an hour before you need to use the space, cause they have to warm up and they have this eerie yellow glow. Um, so just from a strict energy standpoint, um, you know, Matt had said, obviously, there's a lot of retrofit, you heard, uh, utility rebates out there for trying to increase the efficiency of lighting.
That's not part of our, it was never dealt with when they did the, the hallways and the classrooms.
Wasn't part of the green energy study we asked?
I'm surprised.
Yeah, I know it is, but they, it wasn't.
I also know there's something to do on those studies, there's something to do with, for in order for lights to qualify, they have to be on for so many hours or consume so many KOB per year, so maybe it's just with the usage.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
The gym gets used a lot.
Well, big picture, yes, but from just the Halifax day in, day out, I think it might not qualify. I mean, like, with all the youth and rec and town needs and things like that. We went into the boiler room, which is really exciting. They had the.
You had the full tour.
Oh, yeah, you were here for a while. Um, thanks to Matt and Kane letting us crawl all over the place. Uh, the control system, you know, as part of the, I don't think it's green communities, but as part of the, the upgrades around the building, we had the digital thermostats put in that are combination pneumatic, electronic, um, which worked great, but the, the central infrastructure of the building still uses an antiquated technology. Um, it's literally compressed air that gets piped throughout the whole building, and then as spaces cool off, the air pressure will reduce and hot water will be allowed to flow through, and, um, being in the industry, they are kind of a thing of the past now, so eventually, it's gonna, it's, it's actually be, it's difficult to find people that know how to work on them, so at some point, you know, we're gonna need to plan on upgrading that. The upper level hallway, the upper, the upper level hallway flooring, um, we talked about doing the same transition from the tile that's there now over to the same plank, vinyl plank that's installed in the cafeteria, um, which Matt said he and his staff seemed to like, it seems to be wearing well and it stayed down, so.
Is it something that they can replace, or do you have to have outside contract services coming in?
Outside contractors.
It would be an outside contractor.
Okay.
We went through a cup, just a couple of random bathrooms around the building, and Matt's doing his best to clean them. They're, you know, older bathrooms, so they're looking a little tired. Um, you know, just silly things, like, over the years, as maybe paper towel dispensers were replaced, you know, there might be marks on the wall from the old ones, or, you know, the dividers of the, of the stalls where they bolt to the floor might, you know, be rusty and things like that. Um. If you jump in anytime now, Gordon.
Oh, so the one, one thing about going down to the boiler room was Matt pointed out that the drain system actually connects to the courtyard and flooded all sorts of material into the boiler room that they, you know, and they flood down there. So, talked about maybe building up something over that, so that that doesn't happen again. Um, the railings, who we talked about, um, for outside, um, we thought maybe all vocational students could look at that and possibly help rebuild some railings.
Maybe. Um, the problem you always have to be careful of with schools is the handicapped accessibility, and any changes would have to meet the criteria, so that would be the only key, and they could do wooden, they wouldn't be able to do metal. I believe the ones that are out there are metal.
Cause they were looking at behind the gym where they have the parent drop-off, parent pickup railing there.
Oh, so you're talking more almost aesthetic, just to keep the kids, so it's not a.
Not on the actual ramp you're talking about. That like dirt path that they go to that other door there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, something like that they probably could do. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about like a hand railing on a handicapped accessible ramp, cause that, you have to be very careful on those.
It's weird, it's just the railing just stops.
Yeah, I know, right, yeah, yeah, that, something like that they could definitely do.
Yep, of course they do.
And then our, I mean, I don't even know if we brought it up, but I think it's the railing outside the parking lot, where there's one of those trees that are all. Are the arbor buddies?
Yeah.
So, some of the arbor buddies have fallen, and you can see the railing has taken some hits, maybe strong clouds or something, or, but it's in pretty rough shape, so the railing also needs attention. But that, that one definitely seemed like it could be vocational related, like a replacement of that.
So, what we would need to do is to just make a request into them and have them come out and look at it and see if it's a project they could do.
So, how do we go about doing that?
We literally can reach out, either you could or I could, um, and if you let me know what it is that we wanna do, reach out to Elliot and the teachers, and they'll come out and look at it and see if it's a project they could do.
Okay.
I think that that one seemed like it could be value for here and for the students.
Right.
Those, I mean, that was the big, my big takeaways, at least.
That was very thorough, thank you.
So, yeah, so I guess my question, which you might be able to answer, or maybe you can, are any, is any of this in Matt's budget that we have in front? None of that is, is part of, so anything that he, for his line items or whatever, any money you've accounted for is for things, not this?
So, some of, some of this stuff that, um, were discussed or things that we've talked about, that we'll take care of within the budget that we have currently, or if at the end of the mu, end of the year, there aren't any crises, cause you always assume there's gonna be some crisis, and if there aren't some crisis, then those would be some of the priorities that we would take care of, you know, and that's how we've always run all the buildings. So, you know, all the custodians, Matt is particularly good, by the way, but, you know, so Matt will have his to-do list, you know, and say, we don't have a major boiler breakdown, or we don't have a, whatever it is that, you know, goes on, you know, and so maybe he's got twenty thousand left in his budget, so Matt will say, okay, my priority for this twenty thousand in my maintenance budget will be X, Y, Z, and that's how we sort of chip away at a lot of these things, and that's how we've always done it. I mean, that's how he's sort of done the, the HVAC that he talked about, that's how we did the cafeteria floor. You know, that's, those are those things, so, you know, he's sort of letting you know what sort of, I don't, I don't wanna say the word wish list, because it isn't, it's what needs to be done list. It's just they, you know, they're not necessarily rising to the top.
So, the heating unit in the cafeteria, um, I definitely have the opinion that it needs to be replaced. I wouldn't waste money trying to fix it from just the quick estimates that he had given us.
Right.
And if there's the ability to make that room air-conditioned, then I would suggest that we look at doing that when we replace the heating unit there, just to put it in.
But they're a split unit, I think it's called, what we put in the music room and the art room.
Yep.
It's the same thing.
Same theory.
Same theory, okay, yeah.
The unit has a bad bearing right now, and you can hear.
Yeah, it's got lots of things. I just don't want it to fall.
It wasn't designed for us, for cafeteria.
Right.
It was the gym.
Right, 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 right.
It's, so it, it would make sense if there is money in this year's budget.
That would be, that would definitely be.
Something that I would ask the committee to consider is putting in a replacement there, and it would definitely at least give the students in the building, we could air condition it, a place to go cool off.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
It's really hot days.
Yep.
Even if you can't do the air conditioner right now, a split system, you can install just the indoor section now that will do the heating and the ventilating, and then you could put condenser on the roof, down the road.
Total added cost.
Well, of course, if you add cost.
Total cost, we don't get all much.
Correct, yeah. So, you, you could say, yes, you know, two, three years from now, we might wanna put AC, we can't spend, and I'm making up numbers here, but we can't spend all thirty-five thousand dollars right now, so we have fifteen, we could put new HEB unit in that has the ability to do air conditioning down there.
Right.
It sounds like the kitchen floor is also gonna be a very serious issue.
My, my takeaways were the kitchen floor and cafeteria heating unit were.
The two priorities, yeah. That's, that's been what I've heard also. Um, so I think, you know, those are items that I would consider high priorities. You know, we also have the building utilization money, that, you know, if we need to, we can use that. Um, so, you know, we have not broken into that yet, and this is the last year, again, we're having that money, but it would be a very legitimate use for it. PAC is moving out, so.
You were concerned about possible damage to the kitchen floor this school year?
I, I am feeling like we may wanna try to do that, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's not something to really play around with, so, you know, it isn't, we aren't cited at this point, but it has been mentioned on visits, so, um, you know, it's, again, to me, it's always safety and sort of those issues that potentially would cause a, a serious problem. I mean, last thing we would need is to not be able to serve lunch, I mean, that would not be a good thing at all. So, yeah, so that, I mean, those would sort of be my priorities or hopes for this school year. You know, again, it's, it's a little early to know, um, but, you know, Matt does such a great job of sort of keeping track of everything, and, you know, we have been able to sort of chip away at some of these things through this process, and it's the same process I use in all the buildings, every building does it. You know, some years you do okay, and other years, not as much. It really depends.
I think my, my, one of my takeaways, aside from what he was physically telling us, is that it seems like there's good communication between Matt and Brian and Kane.
Yeah, no, they don't get along well at all, they hate each other. It's really, it's sad to watch.
So, that was good. I mean, there was no, I'm so glad you guys are here, cause Kane hasn't been listening for five years.
Yeah, yeah, no, they, they all have each other's back, it, but they're very lucky. Um, you're, you're all very lucky with the team you have here.
The one item that I would add to the list of things to make everyone aware to is the system and the water room and a replacement for that at some point in the future.
That sounds expensive.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely see.
Yeah.
But I, I think that that should be something.
Replacing the boiler?
No, 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 the physical building control system.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so the computerized section of it, yeah. What happened, is that KES now, right? Yeah, yeah, we, we're actually in the process of doing that at KES. It was about nine thousand, I think, I remember, right? I think that's, it's reasonably.
Probably gonna be a little more than that.
A little more, yeah. Yeah, but, um, you know, that was something that we got Steve involved in, our IT guy.
Yep, yeah, you, you will want to have the IT guy, well.
Could you, um, type that list up and share it with the committee?
Yes, I meant to do that before tonight.
You did a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
That was very informative. It was always good to know, I sort of knew most all of it. I felt really good about that, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to join you that day.
That's all right, Gordon did, uh, forgot a pen.
And I wasn't there to help him out, man.
Nobody else had a pen that I would take.
So, so those other components aside, do you wanna talk about the budget?
So.
Or, go ahead.
Just to talk about that water refilling station.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. It is in the budget?
Just one, correct.
I, I had, it's not in this year's budget, it is, I had told them, because we've had so much trouble with heat in the building.
Yeah.
It's small change, do it this year. The kids need to have water.
In this.
Yes, yes, yeah, it was seven fifty.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty small, retrofit, one of the, one of the one.
Right, yeah.
Try it for one.
For one, yeah, just to try it out. So, you know, for seven hundred and fifty dollars, we can, we can, we can afford seven hundred and fifty dollars. The kids need to be able to drink, so, I mean, as I said, this building, you know, gets pretty toasty. It's a huge improvement with the roof and the windows and the shades, but, you know, if it's ninety-five, a hundred degrees out, you can't expect it to be less than that in the rooms. So, um, we had one installed at the high school, and it, it really has seemed to have made a difference for the kids, just their ability to refill their water bottles, and luckily, most of the kids are using the recycled bottles at this point, it's been great. You know, if you go to, if you get up and get a drink every time they're hot, you can't teach a class. So, um, you know, I, I had said to, you know, just try one this year, let's see if we can, if it's worthwhile. As I said, seven hundred and fifty dollars in a, I don't remember what budget we're on, twelve or thirteen million dollar budget, I mean, if I can't come up seven hundred and fifty dollars, we're not doing a very good job.
Speaking of shades, did you, Kane, did you look into the shade?
I did, they were not specked.
They were not specked.
On which ones?
So, I was in the gym the other day watching Caroline's basketball game, and when they, when they were at the hoop near the door, so I guess it's the north part of the building, if you're looking at the, if you're looking, it's, anyway, so the.
Facing the street?
Facing, no, facing the street, so like, let's say this is the street, then there's these small little windows, like these up top.
Side windows.
The side windows, okay.
Closest to the parking lot?
Closest to the parking lot, so every time they got to that basket, all the girls were like this, cause they couldn't see anything, cause it was four o'clock in the afternoon or whatever, and the sun was just right there, so I said, oh, we must have shades for them, because there's new shades on the windows facing the street, but there's no shades on the side windows. So, I was like, why are there no, why are there no shades?
East and west on Avenue Shades, so there's two windows on the west that face towards the main parking lot.
Was it, was, no, obviously not. I was gonna say, I wonder if they were planning on obstruction, like, other parts of the building were trees blocking it, or that wouldn't make sense.
No.
And then there's, there might be one or two facing west, and then the little ones that are above the bleachers.
I, there, there weren't shades in there originally, so I think when it.
It was dirty and they didn't block.
I mean, when we were doing the original plans, I think we said that the.
When we were doing the original plans, I think we said that the windows facing the street cause a lot of glare.
Which they do, right.
And they are terrible, I, I understand the sense why they just. I, I was thinking the shades would have been on every window.
Me too, that's why I asked about it.
So can we bring up at the building committee a change order request that shades be installed?
Can try, yeah, can try, yeah.
And they're big windows too, I mean, they're, not this big, but the two that are facing west, they're pretty decent sized, and I think that's probably where summer, if sun was coming in, if that's particular time, right at that end of the court.
I mean, it was like, well, it was about half their game, so it's like a half an hour, I mean, it's not like the end of the world, but, you know, and these kids are in there trying to play basketball and they can't see.
That's our, that's our home court advantage.
Just constantly request the, the other basketball hoop.
I mean, it's probably definitely on the, on the west side, those two there. I don't, I don't see the, the small tiny ones above the bleachers.
No, it's not where you sit, it wasn't, yeah, it was the, where you face, so yeah, the west side, yeah. So I guess we can try and, it doesn't hurt to ask, you know.
Say that that was not part of the charm, so we found out that that's an issue?
Yeah, okay. First I wanted to see if we had them, they just weren't up yet, so that's why I asked Kane about them, but obviously that's not the case.
The plans are not.
Well, thank you for checking. So anything else before I move forward to talk about? So are we like all exhausted and don't want to talk about the budget anymore? Are we ready to dive into this? What do you think?
I think we don't have any information, and until we have information, I'm not sure what we're diving.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how deep we're diving. I mean, last year we made pretty massive cuts and, you know, I think we.
I guess I just have a couple of questions, like more general, without picking through it line by line, but, um, the salary for the librarian is quite a big jump. I'm on page three.
On that line in the budget for last year, we budgeted all salary increases under the teaching line, so we didn't have a contract. So we budgeted all the increases under one line to the teaching line, so what you're saying this year is that transition from the old contract to the new contract, so there's two years of increases that you're seeing now.
Does that make sense?
But it was budgeted in the teaching line.
Okay, so it's just movement of a line?
Right, we budgeted all the increases under the teaching line and we don't know what's, what's gonna happen with the contract.
So this is two years?
Two years, yes.
Because we phased it off in two years.
Right, right, okay.
And then there could also be, she's had a weight change in addition to a step change. That the nurse would be.
The nurse. The nurses also contractual changes salary this year.
So that was a piece of it.
I had the psychologist salary also.
The same thing with his increase, yeah, that increase was in the teaching line. I know it's flawed, I never, I don't know which way is the perfect way.
Well, no, that's good, cause that took care of five questions.
Yeah, no, that's what I meant, just by maybe not diving in super deep, but just like some general things that just popped out at me right away when I was looking. The contracted services for the building line item, which is on page four, so I remember we had a conversation a little, it's towards the bottom, it's up 15%, so I remember we had a conversation a little bit ago about Matt being able to do a lot of things in-house and that line sort of fluctuates a little bit, what, go ahead, Gordon.
So I believe that's the line item that the school committee cut.
Yeah, exactly.
And they asked them to, so put in that back to 15, it seems realistic.
Okay, yeah, exactly.
That was one of the places we made massive cuts.
Okay, see, moving right along now. Page five, I'm just wondering, with the instructional equipment, what are we buying? That's all I want to know. It's more of a curiosity question.
That's $5,000?
Yep.
We have flexible seating, whiteboard, and some classroom furniture.
Okay, what is flexible seating? Just cause I'm curious.
You gotta take a look in the caner.
Okay.
So it's, it's more like the chairs without backs and like.
Yeah.
Little mushroom seats, they build up your core, and it's things that kind of.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Stays up desks in some of the upper grades.
It's helpful for students sometimes who have difficulty sitting still.
Oh, yeah, no, I think it's great, yeah. Okay, so it's basically classroom furniture?
Yep.
It is, yes, classroom, not standard chair.
The replacement of equipment line right underneath that, 8,000, I'm just wondering what we're replacing.
Paper shredder and copier.
Okay.
So the copiers, to kind of clarify.
Didn't we have a lease conversation about the copier?
Yes.
We've always gone, every couple of years, we have looked, replace a copier, it's just gone dead. So we have just started to go into the leasing option of copiers, so this, we've never had to look anywhere else, this is where, the spot that we put the leasing, the paper machines we have now.
Okay.
Who technically, includes all the supplies and the maintenance included in that one then, and we basically have new, new machines.
And we'll keep them new-ish.
And you can keep them going, so after three, if you get three years out of a copier and it's, it's probably pretty good, a little building the size.
Yeah.
And then after three years, I mean, now the warrant, they've cut all the warranties from, from three years to one or two years, which after the first year, we're spending so much on maintenance, it's just a nightmare, so now with the leasing option, it seems like it's.
The copiers on the state bid list used to come with three years of free maintenance, and the state bid list has changed, it's one year of free maintenance. And then after that, you enter an agreement based on your expected usage, and for some of these machines that have great usage, it can be costly.
I would assume it's because, I would assume it's because the companies that were bidding on the contracts finally said, enough with the three years, we're losing our shirts here.
Joining together, it's, I don't do this anymore.
Yeah.
If we're a building like us, we don't have the usage of the schools have, so it's not as big of a deal, but that is tremendous.
How many copier machines do we have at the first point? Five? How many are office and how many are for teachers?
One office.
That's the only color I wanted to.
Which you have to do, if we gave color, it'd be all over.
Are they networked so the teachers?
Elementary teachers love.
So that's, they are all networked so that they can, they don't even, they just print, they can print right from. So they don't have to stand out there and scrawl? And it's set up so they can do the jobs through their, through their own computer, so when they go down there, they can just have a mining job and they just edit it, it's pretty good setup.
And I don't think we have printers in classrooms.
No.
There are no printers in classrooms here now, which is something we've moved away from, incredibly costly.
Thirty-eight dollars for a jet.
Exactly, yeah, it was just outrageous.
The only other question that I have, and then everyone else can jump in, is page six, the contracted services, it looks like it's gonna say consultation.
That is the contracted service line for specialized patients, and that's the line where they do a lot of evaluations, it's physical therapy, it's occupational therapy, and there's just a great fluctuation in that line depending on the population.
Yeah, the thing is, that was the line that used to be funded through grants, and that grant continues to shrink.
Well, so I was looking at it and it's made quite the jump.
Yep, so it, we used to be able to fund it out of the.
Two forty grant?
It is two forty, yeah, the, I'm just drawing a blank, the two forty grant, but that grant right now is funding mostly all AIDS, so we just don't have that much left for the consultations.
And this is based on the current population students, what their needs are, with a factor added for inflation.
Okay, so I mean, it could change drastically. Okay. Anyone else have anything that jumps out right now? Good girl.
Can I make those recommendations?
Absolutely.
That we invite the finance committee liaison to our next meeting?
Yep.
And have them come in early parties, they will be meeting, and they'll have, they're making a separate call, so if we ask them to meet there by six, they should have information now from Silver Lake at that point, and they should be able to come back and tell us what they have for a total, what they're looking at, and we can have a, on what screen it's listed on the budget that they ask us to cover.
Sounds good.
Yeah, definitely, I, I assume we'll be voting the budget that evening, based on that.
If we get any information, if anyone gets information, I, usually the Halifax invites us at some point, you know, we have a number, you know, we'll make sure to work with that so we come in with some ideas.
Yes, yeah, I plan on, I've been talking with Melinda. I keep, keep wanting to call her Michelle. And, like I said, I have asked her to invite us too, so I will let the committee know when that meeting is and we can be thinking about that.
So like, has the meeting come out today?
We do, it's just a really special night, yeah, it's gonna be a love fest.
So if nobody else has anything right now, we can wrap.
Well, not budget related, but who, like, I don't like that, there's a website that says seven o'clock, who's in charge?
It says six o'clock when I look.
I have both on my phone and on.
On the computer?
Yes.
Cause I, cause I know that, I had an issue before with the date that was listed wrong.
I don't know where that was, because it's six o'clock everywhere, I mean, we've changed a lot.
I thought the meeting was at seven, I'm sorting this confusion.
Is it, is it Charlie that posted?
No.
No, we didn't.
Once the request for the meeting notice goes, it's the town board posting.
So Christine, did you look on the town website, calendar and the elementary school website?
I looked on it, here's the town website.
Uh-huh.
And it says, and I did, and when you mentioned it with the mobile device, so I checked with my phone also, and it says six.
Okay.
I did not look at.
Um, there was, at some point, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to find it now, but at some point, there was some, so I wonder if this is what she's looking at, cause the mobile version on the town of Halifax has the wrong list of people, and somewhere on here it says they meet at the first Monday at seven o'clock.
I looked at the upcoming meetings list.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's for Monday, February 4th, six o'clock for Halifax.
Our website is.
Our website, Kane dropped the ball.
Uh, Kane. Tended marriage.
So, when we set, like, the, when we do a meeting.
Mm, mm-hmm.
So you go to the actual Halifax School Committee, S L R S D, no, 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 is that you on?
Jackie, no, Jackie, Jackie Tebow, there's a bunch of us, so it's Jackie and Ellen and John, Jackie just said, the school committee link on the NGS website says.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now, yeah.
So we got.
So it is six, so it needs to be changed, something changes that.
All the meetings are scheduled, I don't know, you guys? I don't know.
I don't touch that website, I don't know.
This one, this one was updated though.
No one does, we, we take care of their website, they don't, they don't access their website, so that should be updated, that's.
I know, I don't want that responsibility.
Yeah, that, that should be updated through us, if you can't do it, Dave Murphy can access anything within the district, so he can do it, it's incorrect information.
So should we be posting separate meetings there as well?
No, they're, they're all linked.
They're linked right to the town?
It's linked.
But who should we contact about the town mobile version, cause that's not.
Charlie.
Charlie?
I'll send it this season.
Maybe you should leave it, maybe it's better that you're not listed.
Just an update on the town website, the town website provider is no longer, no longer going to support the version that we have, so the town website needs to be updated to the newest version, it's in some way that got bought out with the vibes, so the town has to spend about $4,000 in March or April to update to the newest version.
Yeah. Thanks for that little snippet.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on, I have some important dates to remember and then you can, so on Valentine's Day, we are spending an awful lot of time with joy.
I know, my husband's so excited.
Union 31 in Silver Lake, at the high school meeting at 5:30.
Yes, please.
President's Day is February 18th, winter vacation is the 18th through the 22nd, but we actually don't come back till the 26th, because that Monday, the 25th, there is no school, it's an in-service day for teachers, which Jill spoke to earlier, and then March 4th at 6:00 PM is our next meeting. More budget talk.
So I would put on the agenda six fifteen, budget discussion.
Okay.
Just that way, Melinda can be here for at least 25 minutes, if any other findings